Good afternoon. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Education, Public Safety and the Arts is called to order at 2:03 Chamorah Standard Time. Notice of the hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on September 14, 2023, with the second notice provided on September 19, 2023. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the government of Guam Public Notices Portal and via radio ad. This afternoon, the committee is holding a public hearing to discuss the following appointments. The appointment of Margarita Felicitas B. Angel as the Guam Education Board Retired Teacher/School Administrator of GDOE member of the Guam Education Board; Fred E. Berdalio Jr. as Director of Corrections; Luline Cissin Augustin as the Guidance Counselor Representative Member of the Guam Legislature Commission for Educator Certification; and Rosanna D. San Miguel Tiston as the General Public Representative Member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council. I'd like to welcome my colleagues joining us today. To my right, the Vice Chair of the Committee on Education, Public Safety and the Arts, Senator Chris Duñez, and to my left, Senator Telo Tydegui. Before we begin, I'd like to go over the general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair. Before speaking, they shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. I also want to thank Senator Jesse Duhan for joining us. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from a hearing any member of the legislature in Guam who fails to observe proper decorum pursuant to the 37th Guam Legislature's standing rules. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the hearing by the host. We'll now proceed with discussions on the appointment of Margarita Felicitas B. Angel as the Guam Education Board Retired Teacher/School Administrator of GDOE member of the GEB. If there's anyone here to testify for or against this appointment of Mrs. Angel, please come to the table. Also, Mrs. Angel, if you're here, please come up to the table. So anybody who's here to provide testimony for Mrs. Angel. And we'll go in the order of sign-in, and then, of course, we'll close with you, ma'am. Violetta B. Manlangit? Are you providing testimony, ma'am? Good afternoon, ma'am. If you don't mind, just state your name and title for the record, and then proceed with your testimony. Got to turn the... Thank you.
My name is Violetta Biala Manlangit. I'm a resident of Guam, and I'm a retiree. I'm writing your good office in regards to my sister Felicitas Bialanghel, who is up for confirmation on her appointment as one of the Board of Directors for Guam Department of Education. My sister Felly has been a teacher since she was in the Philippines and since she came to Guam. She started in private schools and then garnered her qualifications to teach in the public schools and has done so until she retired. But her teaching days have not stopped there. As to this date, she is still teaching at the University of Guam, albeit on a part-time basis only. I suppose when teaching is in your blood, it stays there and even after retirement. As a member of the Education Board, I know that she will bring her expertise in the teaching skills and the understanding of what the students need to continue, to be inspired to learn and compete their studies to prepare for their future. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you could just state your name and title for the record, and then proceed with the testimony?
Hafadei Guahuji Theresa Tai Tanoa. I'm a retired teacher. Hafadei, I come before you to give testimony on behalf of Mrs. Felicitas Felly Angel on her appointment as Guam Education Board Retired Teacher/School Administrator of Guam Department of Education as a representative of the Guam Education Board. Having served as a teacher in the Guam Public School System, knowing the challenges students face of situations in class with peers, at home, and their personal selves, Ms. Felly has first contact with the children under her care to nurture their intellectual progress, guiding them sincerely, at times empathizing with matters close to heart. She continues to teach, though, as an adjunct professor at the University of Guam. As an administrator, she is aware of standard operating procedures, maintaining compliance with structures, policies, and communication, promotes a self-environment throughout facilities and personnel, pleasantly interacts with the school community, stakeholders, and local leaders of the village. Ms. Felly actively participates in various local and civic organizations as a member, respectively, and has held various officer positions, a past district governor for the Lions Club's International District 204, Lions International being a worldwide humanitarian service organization as well as being involved with perpetuating the renewal and strengthening of Christian values. Currently a Guam Education Board member, confirming this appointment also allows continuation for Ms. Felly Angel to serve in the capacity and capabilities as she has been and will continue, just diligence the best she can. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you.
Sido smasi, ma'am. Mrs. Angel, did you want to provide an opening statement?
Thank you so much, Honorable Senator Chris Burnett. Buenos dias, Hafadei, our honorable senators of the 37th Guam Legislature, my family, friends, ladies, and gentlemen. I am Felicitas Bialanghel, reappointed by the Honorable Governor Lurion Guerrero as member of the Guam Education Board. I am here today for the legislative hearing of my reappointment confirmation. Being a member of this board, I have this great opportunity of continuing my service to the Guam Department of Education, where I retired as a classroom teacher in 2019, this time in another capacity, but having the chance again to serve our number-one stakeholders in the school community, none other than our students. It has been a challenging journey of service amidst the coronavirus pandemic, super typhoon Mawar, and a myriad of apparently insurmountable problems that beset our Guam Department of Education. This was compounded on my part with the emergence of health problems in my family as well as my own health issues. However, it does not stop here. I'm still here, standing, or rather, here with you, ready to serve. With the support of my colleagues in the board, I continue to be part of this Guam Education Board. There are still some hurdles along the way, such as my limited mobility and the conflict of a schedule of activities, both in the board as well as my college classes at the University of Guam. This is slowly but surely being addressed at this point. It would be remiss of me if I fail to recognize and appreciate my friends, the members of my family, and more importantly, my husband of almost 51 years, who have given me that unconditional support in all my undertakings. Thank you so much for this opportunity, if ever be granted, to again serve the Guam Education Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Angel. We did also, the committee did also receive testimony in support of your appointment from Dr. Matilda Rivera from the University of Guam, and also Dr. Sylvia O. Taylor from the Guam Department of Education. So before I open it up to my colleagues, I would like to ask you, maybe the first question is, how would you describe your experience serving on the Board of Education in this
During my term as appointed by the governor, it was, as I said a while ago, it was really a journey of service with so many challenges along the way. And yes, I'm still happy that I'm able, with my age, with what I have done in the past, I'm still able to serve my community in this capacity. As I said, it's a tedious, challenging, and very, very tedious one, but certainly I am managing it. Thank you.
Ma'am, what would you describe as some of the tedious challenges that you faced as a Board of Education member?
Well, to be honest with you, at first, I thought it was just like a monthly meeting for the board member, but I didn't realize the fact that there would be meetings there and meetings here, right? Work here and work there, being part of some committees in the board, like the Instruction and Curriculum Committee, the IBOGS, and some other accreditation committee. That's what I say, it's a tedious one, because you have to be there, you have to contribute whatever you have for the good of the department, the Department of Education.
What perspective do you think you bring to the board, ma'am, as a retired teacher and school administrator with the Guam Department of Education?
Well, as a retired teacher, you have some kind of flexibilities, whereas if you are in the department as a teacher, right, you have to be with your students, with your class for the whole year or until the school year is over. But you have to sort of set aside some of your whims and caprices in order to meet the needs of the students. I'm not telling you that I'm doing, I have been able to satisfy my whims and caprices being a member of the Education Board, but more or less, I am able to do some little things like watching my favorite telesery and also being with the students, my college students at the University of Guam. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, it did, ma'am. As a retired teacher, what would you say are some of the challenges facing teachers currently in the Guam Department of Education?
I have been there, Mr. Senator, or your honorable Senator. I know the challenges that every teacher meets along the way, and I really tip my hat off to these teachers, because a lot of them, if not all of them, go above and beyond the call of duty. I remember one time asking someone, a technician, to install an air conditioning unit in my room, because I really pity my students in that classroom. It's like a cubicle, and I was then teaching ESL. I have the spatial population of students, so I have to do that. Teachers have to, you know, have to dig into their pocket, those cash, those monies that are supposedly for their owner, for their own family, in order to share it with the students. And what makes me a little bit perturbed is the fact that I'm still seeing, I'm still seeing a lot of these teachers doing that, despite we are seeing there are some funds available, and they still have to do that. It's...
So, yeah, those, we hear that all the time. In fact, we had an oversight hearing here a couple weeks ago, and one of the deputy superintendents had talked about administrators spending out of pocket, right? And so I hear the same from teachers. I hear that they have to buy paint, they have to buy supplies, some of them buy air conditioners for their classrooms. And we all know that the Guam Department of Education is sitting on, you know, over $100 million in federal funds that are, you know, supposed to be used for the types of things that these teachers are spending their out-of-pocket money on. So as a board member, what do you feel you could do to address those types of situations?
I think one of them, but remember, we are members of the board, and we do not micromanage the Guam Department of Education. So what we can do really is to situate that the funds are properly used in accordance with how they are achieved and how they are received, and if there's a need to rebump, I'm sorry, to rebump some of the things that are no longer feasible or logical, then we might as well do so. And it may come from the Board of Education working on the policies that will situate that this will take its place. It will happen.
Ma'am, you kind of led me to my next question. So we just had a public hearing yesterday on Bill 117-37 that would give the Guam Board of Education governing board powers. And as you said, right now, you're just a policy board. Did you have any thoughts on that measure? And what are your thoughts on the role of the Board of Education members?
I think the role now is, and the duties are very specific. I saw that, I read that one, and this time they are so specific that it would really address the ones that were not addressed before, and hopefully, there is a big change. I think we all want change, innovations in the way how the department is being run, how the department is taking care of the funds and so many things. There are so many things, numerous things.
There are so many things. Can you name a couple of them that you would like to see addressed, ma'am?
As I said, the funds, there would be enough funds for the students as well as for the teachers for their perusal. I would like to see also a real engagement of students in the classroom. I have seen some of your videos, Senator, the one that you sent, and it's in our group chat, and it's, I feel so sad, I feel so, now I'm insecure, because these things are happening among our students. So I would say if we have some funds to take care of the well-being of our students, emotional, social, and well-being of our students, which is probably not a part of the core curriculum, but it is something that will turn them into a better citizen, a better student. Because actually, with all the teachings that we are doing, with all these funds that we are spending, the end result should be to have a student that is productive, a citizen that can take care of himself, of his family, and of his country. And I believe that, because that's how I train my own children.
So, ma'am, just my last couple of questions before I send it over to my colleagues.
You have a lot of questions.
I know, I'm very, that's what my mom always said, she had too many questions, Kristobet. So, ma'am, what are your goals then if you are, you know, confirmed and you get to serve another term on the Board of Education? Do you have a couple priorities that you'd like to see through?
Of course, there are some priorities that I want to see happening in our Guam Education Department as well as in our board. And of course, that is for our students to really understand their role as students, for teachers to really understand their role as teachers, as well as the administrators and whoever is in the leadership team of the Guam Department of Education. I think if they are conscientized on their duties, on their priorities, it will be a happy Guam Department of Education. But probably it will take some time, Senator, right? It needs a drastic change on so many things. But we are hopeful that at the end of the tunnel, we will see a rainbow, that these insurmountable problems that is besetting us will be slowly and hopefully be resolved, and we will have, well, we will have a good island. Actually, this is just to let you know, because my three kids are in the States. I've been hearing a lot of our students who are going to the mainland, and they're doing a good job. They are leaders. They are examples, role models of other students. And every time they would graduate, they're so happy to have with them the flag of Guam, and my grandchildren are one of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Angel. That's the first time I heard of the light at the end of the tunnel, but that was the first time I ever heard of the rainbow at the end of the tunnel. Thank you, ma'am. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues in the order of their arrival. We'll start with Senator Telo Tydegui. I'd also like to recognize Senator Sabina Perez. Senator Tydegui?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to those who came to testify today. I've known Felly for, gosh, many, many years, over 25 years, we've known each other, Felly, and as a teacher, when you were a teacher. So I appreciate that you want to continue to serve the community in your capacity. And, you know, if people don't know her, she might be, you know, small, you know, nice and everything like that, but she can be tough. You know, they usually say shorter winds are usually tough. But you definitely put your two cents out there regardless, so I hope you continue to do that. But Felly, there is, you know, DOE has been quite a situation right now, starting very late, you know, in the ballgame for our students going back, as well as the conditions of our infrastructure. And this has been going on for a long time. You know, it's just been building up. I do realize the pandemic has made it difficult, as well as, you know, the typhoon that's up and coming. But I was told that board members also have subcommittees, you know, while they're sitting on the board, they, you know, each individual tackles a certain project, you know, and but I haven't seen anything with the outcome of what your hard work or the subcommittee has brought to the legislature. We had a couple bills a couple days ago, and I would like to know what the board was doing in those particular subcommittees, like infrastructure, what are they doing for the ADA compliance? You know, we don't need legislation to make sure that people with disabilities have a means to go to school. You know, that's already in law. You know, what we're trying to do is put, you know, fire to the feet to get them to do something. So what subcommittees do you sit on right now?
I'm with the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. So I have there the accreditation, right? Also the Head Start, so, right?
Okay. So I hope that I could see you next time we have a bill that has to do with Head Start or the curriculum, that you're here during public hearing and to testify on your findings as well, because we're getting a different song and dance from the superintendent. You're an individual, you speak your mind, I know that, so I hope you continue to do that, and don't make it a political influence from anyone else, but your experience as a teacher and what's really needed, do you have any teachers who ever come see you and want to talk to you about their issues?
Yes, I have several.
Okay, and they're not just friends, there's new set of teachers, younger generation.
Two of them, two of them are my, one is my daughter, and the other one is my son-in-law. But I'm meeting a lot of teachers, my co-teachers in the past, yeah, they, we talk, we engage, and, you know, I always say, you're just hanging there, that's all I can say, just hanging there, and your labor will be recognized, and actually, it will be appreciated, right? I am appreciating it now, so, and parents, I like parents, I like parents talking to me also.
I tell you, when it comes from your own family members, they don't hold back. I mean, they tell you straight out, you know? So I'm pretty sure they're going to be very honest with you on what is going on. So I appreciate that you're leaving an open door for these teachers to come to, and I hope you continue that and as you continue your position here on the board, a very, very important board, by the way. So, and I don't think any of us take it lightly, you know, in confirming individuals. I hope you continue to, you know, well, actually be proactive. I don't know if you are being proactive, but I hope you are being proactive. And even though you're in one particular committee, that you can lend yourself to other committees that are obviously lacking, you know, in providing this body information that would help us help you. So help us help you.
Yes, of course, Senator.
Other than that, Felly, my door is always open, and if you have any concerns, I'm sure you get it from teachers, then feel free to open my door and tell me a few things that I can do to help you. So thank you for wanting to serve again. I wish you luck, great luck, especially what we're facing right now with our school system. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tydegui. Senator Duñez? Also, I'm sorry, Senator, I'd like to recognize Senator Roy Canata as well. Senator Duñez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Miss Angel. Thank you for being here, and I'll greet you in your, something you're probably used to, being a Lions Governor, roar. and I'll greet you in your, something you're probably used to, being a lion's governor, roar. And I want to thank you for accepting the renomination, particularly in this time when Department of Education is going through struggles and as you said, you know, reform, and I'm glad you mentioned your vision of achieving the rainbow at the end of the tunnel. I think that that was a great observation. Sometimes I, I'll be the Chris with only a few questions, maybe only one.
Okay.
Sometimes I, when I, you know, come to a confirmation hearing, it's the writing of somebody else that jumps out at me the most. And I just wanted to make a couple of points. Dr. Taylor mentioned about you. She said, "For Miss Angel, education is the most powerful weapon out there." And I think that that is, you know, an observation of you and all your experience that you have. Having that as your guiding principle certainly puts you in a place to be effective in what your duty and your focus should be on the board as a retired teacher. So I just wanted to mention, and all your civic engagement is really very impressive. One program that I know that's probably been in existence for maybe a decade or more now, and I wanted to see as a retired teacher and as a teacher who had a front seat at seeing this program, that I think has been transformational in education, is the mentor program. And I understand that it's still continuing on, it's taking on a little bit different approach, maybe as coaches and the like, but I wanted to get your take on how that program is being sustained. I knew several of the teachers, and in fact, one other board member, that were the inaugural individuals to bring that in for teacher retention, particularly those teachers between the three and five years, who may be having some challenges with, is this really for them or not? But man, one year of mentoring from a senior teacher and, you know, for a lot of them, the light bulb just comes on, and they're like, wait, this is what I'm gonna do, because they're taught some techniques and the like, to how to maybe modify some of their approaches. Have you been observing that, and is that still very alive and well?
Yes, it's still ongoing, very much ongoing, Senator. And you, we see, I see this in the different schools, where you have the mentor and the mentee engaging in some kind of a conversation. And this is really, that's correct, this is also to sustain particularly the new teachers who are overwhelmed with so many, so many duties and responsibilities there are, that a teacher has to undertake. And it is good, and it's going around, it's going around, the mentorship for the new teachers. It could be done by several administrators in some other ways, but I believe so, because when I was still there, now, this was one of our programs, mentoring.
Yeah, I just, I caught that, one thing I caught when you were answering our chairman Barnett during his questioning. One thing I really liked, you said in terms of the tedious nature and the work that you want to continue to concentrate on is everybody's roles and responsibilities. Administrators have a role and responsibility, teachers have a role, responsibility, students hopefully are encouraged to understand their role in their learning process. So I wanted to maybe overemphasize this point, that I hope you continue to advocate with your position on the board, that there's updates from the subcommittee level and others to say that this mentor program is alive and well, because we need to keep our teachers. And of course, we've talked many times about compensation here and different things that we need to do, but I think it's also their ability to get that fulfillment out of their, their teaching that is something that, you know, I'm glad you mentioned also students off-island that are celebrated and celebrate their knowledge and achievements. You know, sometimes on the back and forth, even with the DODA system, people will say that, look at that school system, but a lot of people don't realize a large percentage of the teachers are our teachers. They're from Guam, and even in the charter schools and the other schools that are being successful. So if you really can watch, something we're trying to do here is we're concentrating on the facilities, because we believe the teachers are doing it. We believe that they have the ability, we believe that our students, given the right environment, can thrive. So I wanted to recognize, you know, your role and, you know, your specialty and why you're appointed to this board, and I'm glad that you are going to continue to concentrate on making sure that we have the best and the brightest and keep our teachers, because that, to me, is the key to the success, is those teachers who just love what they do every day, learn every day also as they teach, and then sustain going forward. So your commitment to that really makes me very positive to look forward to voting on your, on your renomination. So thank you once again for accepting the duty and the responsibility, and we look forward to the productive things that you can bring forward.
Thank you so much. Also, Senator Duñez?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Lujan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Miss Angel.
Good afternoon, Senator.
And thank you again for wanting to continue service and serving the Board of Education. I want to ask a couple of questions, actually, in regards to superintendent and all that, because we, there's been, you know, one oversight after another, and a couple of board members attend the oversights. And the question I always pose to GDWE and as well as board members is that the problems that we see that have been, have been coming forth are problems that didn't just happen. It's happened. My question is, how is it that during the evaluation process, or maybe a previous superintendent, that it's outstanding performance every single time? How is it that we come to the outstanding performance every single time, and then we're just seeing now these problems, and these problems, again, as you, as you had just mentioned earlier, that there are a lot of problems? And again, mold problems, rodent problems, infrastructure problems are, again, have been persistent? And how is it, again, that during the evaluation process of a superintendent, that they constantly, or previous, get constantly outstanding? And likewise, I kind of want to question the fact that in today's paper, current superintendent, Dr. Swanson, said he's appalled by the lack or failure of the school system to provide accommodations for students with disabilities. He went through an interview process. He had to have gone through and seen the schools, he had to have seen the conditions, and until he got on board, that's when he said he's appalled? He's attended a couple of the oversight hearings? He's heard parents with disabilities talking about their kids not being accommodated? So now he says, since taking the helm, he's appalled? What goes on in the interview process that continues to have outstanding performances? And then when they come on board, they're appalled by what they see? Didn't they not see? Were they not told? Did they come in blind? How was the, was the interview done through Zoom, through a nice backdrop? And I'm not blaming you, I'm just, how does this happen? Because I can't seem to get that question answered.
Okay, your observation is correct, Senator, that a lot of these problems have been there. They have been there in our department, but probably some were addressed. Some of these problems were addressed, and that's why we saw how the former, I'm talking about the former superintendent, how the former superintendent did his best also, right, to eliminate if not all of these problems that were brewing, and some have been there since time immemorial. So he, we saw him, we saw him doing his best. When I was, that was my first year being member of the board. I saw him doing his work meticulously as a superintendent of the Department of Education. Probably, probably I did not see the overall picture. The overall picture, but I saw how he, how he takes care of, how he took care rather of the department. And for, there's a question also about the new superintendent, right? The new superintendent, I believe and I know, is doing his very best. He's doing his very best in order to resolve some of these issues. And he's always there, and he's always there, his presence is there in order to see to it that things will be resolved, problems will be resolved.
And I understand that, I know, I'm not saying that they're not doing their best, but again, once they come on board, he just came on board, and again, with the interview process, did he, was he not, face to face, was he not taken to the schools and see the conditions of the schools, whether or not they want, they want to take this position and all that? And then, and then to say that, I mean, should it be a basic question? When I came on board, I'm appalled by the students with special needs not being accommodated? I mean, he should have known that, he should have been appalled from the very beginning, not just when you came, just when you came on board.
That's exactly.
Yeah, and so I'm saying, what is this interview, is it, is the interview process a love fest? Is this back to, again, you know, Woodstock and love and peace and things like that? I mean, because it didn't just happen, these things didn't just happen. And at some point, we gotta hold people accountable, and usually we say, hold people accountable from the very top. And so that's what I'm saying, these things didn't just happen, didn't just, all of a sudden, everything's falling apart. And so when are we gonna start, again, holding people accountable from the top? We hold people accountable from the middle on down, but we don't hold people, I mean, outstanding, really outstanding. I mean, okay, they tried their very best, as opposed to just trying their best. But these problems, again, proceeds, I mean, even before the previous superintendent. But I'm saying, how, what is the evaluation process that this keeps happening? Because if that keeps happening, we will never fix it. In previous legislatures that I was in, we had problems finding money. Now we have money, we don't, now it's procurement. It's not, if it's, if not one thing, it's another. We have to start holding people on top accountable. I was in a meeting yesterday, and I won't say with who, but from a private school, and this is what they said to me. They said, "Students that transfer from public school, at least to their institution, are behind." University of Guam says the same thing. Imagine the kids that aren't being accommodated, the special needs kids. Imagine how much behind they are, because they're not being accommodated. So, I mean, we want to fix, we're not, we want to fix the system, but we need to know where the problems are, and we keep saying, "Malik, Malik, Biba!" And it really shouldn't be Biba. We have to start holding people accountable. So I'm just wondering how this process of outstanding comes about? When we see that you did an outstanding job at Leaky Roof's GW Gym was closed down before the previous superintendent left? And so I'm, which, I'm trying to understand how it's done? So if there's something that needs to be fixed, you know, in our level to be able to do it? And I'm not, I'm just, because the evaluation process comes from the board, right? The board evaluates, and the board hires a superintendent. So the hiring and firing and the, and the, again, the ratings come from the board. So how does that happen if we need to, need to fix it or tighten it up to make sure that, that, you know, you know, we have things that we have to go through to be able to get outstanding? And, you know, those are pretty stringent procedures that people have to go through. And so, you know, the oversights are not fixing what's, what's happening, we want to fix it.
It's a mundane work, Senator, it's a lot of work. So if we can start, right, fixing now, this is the time that we need to start fixing whatever needs to be fixed. And I still believe that, as I said earlier, our incumbent superintendent of the Department of Education is doing his best. One time I, I read on newspaper, we are, we are running, we are running a plane and fixing it, or we are flying a plane and fixing it. So it is, it is an expression of the big work that lies ahead, of not only for the superintendent to fix, but for all of us to fix.
Well, he should be doing a better job now, because he's facing a lawsuit. He's got a lawsuit there right now, in the courts. And so as much as he's doing his best, he better do a lot better, because he's, he's facing a lawsuit, and if I'm not mistaken, I think the board is being sued as well.
And this is my first lawsuit in my entire life.
So, see, we want to prevent things like that, these are the things we want to prevent. And these laws have been in, the Adequate Education Act has been in place since I was in the legislature, that was a long time ago.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, again, you know, please go back and have the fellow board members reevaluate your evaluation process, because, again, somebody needs to be held accountable. I'm not saying they're not doing their best, but to be, for some, for, for someone to have an outstanding evaluation, but yet your facilities are failing. How can you have outstanding failing? You know, if, if, if you have a parent-teacher conference and the teacher, you have an outstanding student, but now they're failing the class? That would, that would cause a concern. Outstanding in what? What am I outstanding on? And why am I failing? I, we need to understand that, that process, because that process is still in place. I mean, and I know, I think there's a bill now, I think, to give more, I think it's more operational duties, I think, for, for the board members?
For the board.
Yeah, I mean, is that gonna fix it? I don't, I don't know. I don't know if that's gonna fix it. But something is broken. Actually, not something, it is broken, and it's gotta be fixed. And so we want to help you fix it. And if it needs us to fix it, you need to tell us that. If it's you guys that need to fix it, you've gotta fix it, because our schools, you're losing students, charter schools, more people are wanting charter schools, I applaud that. I applaud competition, I love competition.
Been teamwork, sir, so we all fix it. Teamwork, it's a collaborative effort.
Well, let me just give you a heads up at this point, okay? And to the board members and everybody. We are going to attempt to fix this. We are gonna have a bill for parental choice for schools. Because if the board and if DOE cannot fix it, then, you know, lawmakers will fix it. And parental choice, because you're seeing that right now. So please, go back to your board members and say, "We have to reevaluate our evaluation process." I applaud you for wanting to stay on, because it's not an easy job. I wouldn't do it, not for the stipend that you get. But anyway, thank you very much for wanting to come on, and I, I'm not directing this at you, I'm directing this at the process, at the process, and how this process is, is done. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you, Senator Lujan. Ma'am, I just think, and I speak for the committee, we all want the board to do a better job of holding the GDWE superintendent and leadership accountable, and we don't want you to be saying "Biba" when it's really "Baba," right? So I think that's where Senator Lujan is coming from. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Ms. Angel and all the people here today. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Ms. Angel and all the, the people here today. So I, I just, it speaks volumes that you are accepting the renomination to be on the board. Considering you've done, you've excelled as a teacher. You've taught for 51 years. You're Teacher of the Year, Chosen Teacher of the Year. And I think it speaks volumes that you wanna continue your service on the board. Um, but just know that, um, you know, your role, like you said, as a teacher, you know, now that you're on the board, it's, your role has changed into policy, right? Recommending policy for the board. Uh, so I guess my question is, you know, how is that shift? How were you able to make the shift from a teacher to a policymaker? And, you know, as you made that shift, I'm sure there was learning that occurred on the board. And considering that this is your second time around, what do you want to do differently? Um, and what do you want to accomplish in your term?
Thank you, Senator. Um, the, the shift is brought up there because, of course, as a teacher, you have your duties. And then as a member of the board, it will be a little, it's, if not much of a difference, being a member of the board. So, uh, the similarity is that I still want to take care of the kids. I still want to represent the teachers and, uh, and also listen more to the parents as a board. When I was a teacher, I was probably just mingling or engaging with my students' parents. Now this time, it's, uh, right, it's more of the, uh, the population, right? Of the whole population as much as, as possible. The, the parents and be attending parent teachers', uh, conferences or when they have their meeting together to discuss some issues. Um, yeah, there's more to do, I think, as a, as a board. There's more to do, there's more work to do as a board member. And slowly but surely, I'm trying to accomplish some of this work, yes.
So what are the common needs that has arisen from your discussions with parents, teachers, students, that you are gonna prioritize?
Oh, I would say the, uh, the students' learning. I would say the students' learning that we need to continue engaging our students and, uh, and their, um, assessment, the method of assessing the students. Probably if we give some more innovations as to the way they are being gay, their knowledge, that the gain is being gauged, being gauged or being evaluated.
So does that include changing the system now? Because I believe there is a, um, what is the, what is it? What is the method that they're testing students? What is that, um, program? The testing?
Smart, uh, I, I, I don't remember. I don't remember the name, but I can show you what that is, right? And I think that is being implemented at the Department of Education, smart behavior, right?
Yeah, because the, the grading system right, right now.
Integrated, right, yes.
Uh, it's been said that, you know, students see it as an easy pass. The way the grading system is right now, that they're almost guaranteed to pass. Um, have you heard that feedback from any, any of the members in the, in the educational community?
Not quite, Senator. That kind of feedback.
Okay, and then you mentioned you want the members to understand their roles, like students know what their role, teachers, administrators. So what is it that you're trying to address? You know, it implies that the roles are not understood. So what, what exactly do you mean by that?
Oh, that would involve the system, I guess. The system, the system that is supposed to be followed by the leadership in the department. And that is for the administrators and for the teachers as well as the students and for the parents themselves. There, there must be a way in order to, to see to it that they are learning, our students are learning. Because that is our, our task, to make, to make them learn and to prepare them to become a better citizen, to become better citizens of our country, of our island.
So in the years that you've been teaching, what do you see as one of the barriers or the challenges that maybe have limited student, students' learning?
Uh, there could be a lot of factors that are involved there, Ms. Senator. It could be even the orientation of itself of the students. It would be the discipline that they have at home. That could make a difference. It could be the priorities of the parents at home. So how, how are these priorities seen by the students when they are at home? Is it, is it a continuation of what they're learning in school? Or it's just the, the very opposite of what they're learning in school? Something like that, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I told, I see that too, like school readiness. That concept of school readiness is, is a problem, right? There's something that I'm trying to promote is early childhood education or increasing literacy from birth till school age. And we know that there's literate, literate poor households where there are 300 million word gap by the time they enter school. And it's really good to hear that you're, you're in the Head Start Subcommittee. So I definitely would like to reach out to you to develop a, a more robust literacy program to ensure school readiness. Maybe that's what I was trying to get at too, is, you know, any specific initiatives that you think might be very impactful. Um, the other thing is social promotion. I think that's another big issue. And if I can get maybe your, your input on your, your thoughts about that. We could talk another time, too.
Okay, but, well, actually, when I was still a teacher, I really, I was not really in conformity with this uh, mass passing or, or the one that be, that is being practiced. I still believe that the students should really pass the grade level and, uh, and that they are ready to, uh, to go up to the next grade level. Yes, I still believe in that, right?
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for your responses. I know there's a lot more discussion. I also want to thank your family for supporting you. I know, um, you know, you've, you've chosen to do, to serve, continue to serve the community. You didn't choose to run away from these huge problems that DOE is experiencing. So, you know, my hat's off to you for accepting the nomination. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Canata?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hafrem Abuhai, Ms. Angel. It's very great to see you, um, taking up the public service. Rings again. I wasn't, I was never your student, but I do recall your proactive, um, educational, uh, career. I commend you for your commitment and your public service. I know you're a lion because we serve where, where there's a need. And there's always a need for public service. And you definitely stood up in, in every capacity you can, as well as your husband. Your husband and your family supporting you here is very great. I do have a question. How do you, what do you think about the vaping issue in the schools? What do you think we can do to curb that? Do you have any comment on that situation? Because it's already at the elementary level. Do you have any, um, notes on that one?
Well, I have some, but I think what, what's going on now is there's still a problem on diversity, diversity. That is still an issue in some schools, some of the public schools, as well as students, right? Sometimes they don't get along of a particular group of students because they are like this. They come from this place and so on and so forth. So if we could, if we could really emphasize the, the beauty and the advantage of embracing diversity among them, where they could learn more and they can interact more with students who, who might have different way of life, who might have different culture in life. And then they can help together.
I think we're, uh, I don't, I'm not too sure if you heard me correctly, ma'am. It's vaping. You know, the vape cigarette, e-cigarettes, the puff bars and that kinda stuff? I think we were on two different, uh, subjects.
Well, because I was, I've been seeing the, the video and it's all about fighting and so on and so forth.
No worries. Okay, how do we, how do you think we can better serve our students in the capacity that we haven't been able to fulfill employment over at DOE? We've been short teachers, but it seems to me that the charter schools have been able to fill their teacher capacity and their administrative capacity. But it seems like we're, you know, there's so many problems with DOE, unfortunately. Um, again, these didn't happen overnight and I'm not saying that it happened under your watch or your tenure. But, um, I, I'm just very, um, lost for words when we're trying to recruit people at a quote unquote, better package deal as a government employee who's classified versus a charter school employee who most of the time has less, um, benefits. Do you have any comment towards that effect?
I think, I think charter school is, charter schools have a smaller population. And that is an advantage already, right? If you are talking about public school population, it's really, it's really huge, right? And so, and so it could be one of the problems. And it could be a, a disadvantage to the public schools, the fact that there are so many students that we have to, we have to accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
So for the teachers, uh, um, there are some ways already, like, uh, like this fast track certification of teachers. Those teachers were not certified yet to be, to teach in the classroom. But there is a fast way to do that. And I think the University of Guam is assisting in this initiative. And so we are getting some more students. I think it was like, like January, I'm not very sure, but this year or the other year, that we graduated like 40 students and are able, they're able to receive their certification to teach in the public schools. So if we continue doing this program, it would be a great help. Another thing that I'm hearing is employment of the retired teachers. So, and I think there, there are some good opportunities for them because sometimes the retired teachers may want to come back. But the thing is, the conditions may not be very, very favorable for them. So if they're given some kind of, uh, better, better condition, then it's up for, for a grab for some of our retired teachers.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you for your services and I wish you all the best. You have my support, um, for your confirmation. And, um, you know, let us, my, let my office know what we can do to assist you in any way and whatever respects, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Uh, if there's no, is there any more testimony? Anything you would like to say before we close, Mrs. Angel?
I, I think I answered all your questions.
I have more if you want.
My brain stops working now. I'm so overwhelmed with all your questions. I'm just here to serve, you know? Yeah, I'm just joking.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. If there's no further testimony, uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you again for coming out to provide your testimony. And, uh, thank you, Mrs. Angel, very much for, for being here. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Fred E. Burdahlio Jr. as Director of Department of Corrections. All those who are here to provide testimony relative to Mr. Burdahlio's appointment, please come up to the table. Whether we'll, uh, end with Chief Burdahlio. So again, those who are here to provide, uh, testimony, Sinona Ron Legwatney. And we'll start with a former director of DOC, Major Joseph Carbelito, the Guam Police Department. Please, sir, state your name for the record and then provide your testimony.
Joseph S. Carbelito, Police Major, Guam Police Department. Buenos dias, Senators. I am here today to provide testimony in support of the confirmation of Mr. Fred Burdahlio as the Director of the Department of Corrections. I have known Mr. Burdahlio since joining the Guam Police Department over three decades. Although I was never assigned to work with him as a peer, I did get to know him and how he was as a former chief of police of the Guam Police Department. He served a four-term, uh, he served four terms, I mean, a four-term career as a chief of police and accomplished a lot due to his military and educational background. During his term as a chief of police, I recall being a police lieutenant assigned to the commander, assigned as the commander of the Tumon, Tumoni precinct. He implemented a police reserve program to address the shortage of manpower that continues to plague the GPD to this day. The DOC has a reserve program, but has not materialized due to a lack of interested candidates and other reasons. I am optimistic in Fred's ability and foresight to do the same at DOC as he did at GPD. As a leader, he was cordial with people and willing to listen to new ideas presented to him as alternative solutions to address the constant demands of the job. Ironically, I also know him as a fellow former Marine who served his country just like I did around the same timeframe. That alone is worthy of a shot at any job. Till, till this day, I will never forget the discipline instilled in me as well as the significant change it made in, in my life on how I view and do things. The Marine Corps challenged me and played a significant role in making me the man I am today by quickly turning a teenager right out of high school to a mature soldier with confidence and attitude that could overcome any obstacle by adapting to any change and conquering any problem. The Marine Corps core values of honor, courage, and commitment that was instilled in me thrives in what I do in my daily life today. Marines live by these set of enduring core values that form the bedrock of our character. These values guide our actions and bolster our resolve. Honor, courage, and commitment lead us to the victory over the physical, mental, and moral battles faced during combat or while serving in our communities on behalf of our nation. These are the values that ensure every fight in current and future battles supports our common moral cause. I believe Mr. Burdahlio to be that same kind of man who goes about his business with these core values. who goes about his business with these core values. As the former Director of the Department of Corrections for two and a half years, I know the difficult task that lies ahead for not only Mr. Bernalio, but for his leadership team as a whole. Upon my departure as the Director and learning that Mr. Bernalio was coming on board, I personally endorse his selection and appointment by the Governor and Lieutenant Governor of Guam. I met with Mr. Bernalio and briefed him on the transition report I prepared with all the pending and ongoing issues and projects. He was very receptive and eager to learning and strategically handling all the ongoing issues by asking detailed questions and presenting alternative solutions. In conclusion, I am confident in Mr. Bernalio's ability to lead the DOC. Thus, I am in full support for his confirmation as Director of the Department of Corrections and wish him and the DOC good luck. Thank you, Sisus Maasi.
Thank you, sir. Senor Ron Leguanyia.
Sisus Maasi, senador. Si Ronon Leguanyiazu. Matu du papa gini sa pudi, ua tiba sangonu pa be fatu papa gini lo anyu hunuk. Na si Fred para ma hunuk i confirmation nane. Ezigiliku maladabe hona papa zabe supporti estina taotou. Taodza ra zau gini gi policia. Taodza tininohu pu desixana choctu. Lo estina taotou utungu na anasinya itsechu. Xempia uliya toro experienceon ya. Siguni para itinige ya. Sa utungu estina taotou na ma adzigui put i qualification ya. Ti manatsas ti tableru na para ma puntas ti na taotou ezigii no lii. Za hagasanae no tungu estina taotou agas ma'gas gi policia. Pes matu papa sa huli na, na siniya ta angoku estina taotou sa pudi kapasidad ya dan experienceon ya ni estina klasin choctu. Estan, ga lacha no lii na para na set bidixia man prisionero parfa na gasgas. Ma'uliketu na choctu ma'ulikenona idea. Wa otu xentu se donse na prisionero. Konni huzung magado na fan na gasgas kenau huzung sa bulan basula. Yano ma'ulikenona hinasu tananano. Kalan ezi go'pia on mesa panani temponegi lo ma'ulikenu na hinasu. Pes anuk na aspipia inpeñu para u fa na juda gi monu ni na siniya estina taotou. Apa tu nga na pidi aceidatu loki dan humami muskela dan ni asagonya. Za distiduranti ni ifina lagunya para senador. Ekofana ti manafa taotungu estina taotou. Sa kalan uli na gi zamaos sincero gi pu fa manajuda gi esti i komunitat dan estina governmentu. Zabe na kadada sa pidi esti xa pa malu la zauana ba be supporti put fa bot u gogogo hamzu para un kun fitma estina persona. Sa komunli ti na itaina xempin i, i tori itsecho ya. Ga experiencea, ta loki komu director wasa, wasa na demerector gi GPD dan na ga kapasidad gi experienceon ya ki militad. Dan ma'ulikana taotou uli estina taotou na sincero. Ti dokun estina taotou. Za zau tu nga za go'fri on ezigii za kalan ezi ma parewahe ney ta zan ezi para gi zamaos ta kilu ki ni adzi. Ezigii ni riparau ni Fred. Za Fred magai estina sasangan celu para hago u supportia. Za gogogo loki toro samzu na kun fitma estina taotou. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi, Senor Leguanyia. Former Senator Tony Lamarena.
Buenos dias, senators. Chairman Barnett, members of the committee. Uh, my name is Tony Lamarena and I'm here to testify in favor of the confirmation of Fred Bernalio. And, um, the proud men and women, both uniformed and civilian at Department of Corrections, deserve great leadership. And, uh, you know, I've had the honor of serving in the capacity he's in. And I tell you, uh, the men and women at DOC are hardworking individuals and, you know, they can't do it alone. And I, I'm here because I have known Fred for, actually since he was Police Chief when he was nominated by then Governor Edibaza Calvo to serve as Police Chief. And, you know, his leadership style is, as, uh, as the prior speaker was saying was that he's, he's an humble individual. He's not there to say, I'm the head of the group. And, you know, he involves the entire group, gets their input. And that's what they need at the Department of Corrections, is there are good people there. I've had the experience to work with them. And if you can get their heads together and collaborate and come up with ideas together, they can solve many problems. And I think Fred is that individual that can do that. He's ones, he is one individual that can bring people together and, and make DOC, uh, a, a great department. The, the reality is, is that the department can't do it alone. It also requires you, the senators, and your cooperation in making sure DOC succeeds. Uh, during my tenure at DOC, sadly, our Oversight Chair at the time only had time to chastise what we did at DOC rather than helping us succeed. But together with the individuals that are currently at DOC, the leadership, we've got Teresa Tayama here, we've got all kinds of people at DOC, again, both civilian and uniform. They need great leadership and I think Fred brings that to the table. But they also need the collaboration of you, the legislature, because DOC is not a, a agency that you turn off the light at five o'clock. It's a twenty-four, seven operation. But you're also in charge of, now the, what's the population? Seven hundred people, seven hundred individuals, detainees and inmates at DOC. You're in charge of making sure that you meet their needs, their medical needs, their housing needs. You meet, you also have to understand they have constitutional rights that need to be addressed. And so it's, it's, it's an ongoing battle and not only that, dealing with a facility that was built in the sixties that was designed to hold only three hundred individuals. I mean, when I was there, we were able to rehab about three or four units. But that's, that's a far cry from, from what really needs to be done in DOC. And I think Fred can, uh, can bring a DOC to that level. Uh, but he also needs the help, not only of his staff, but you, the senators as well. But I'm here in favor of supporting the confirmation of Fred and I wish you much luck and my door's always open. If you want to give me a call, I'm more than glad to help you out anytime.
Thank you, Senator. Teresa Tayama.
Good afternoon, Chairman Senator Chris Barnett and members, uh, senators who are here. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak here at the confirmation hearing of Deputy, of Director-elect Fred Bernalio. I, I wrote a few little things, I just want to be very big, but, uh, I have known, uh, Director Bernalio. I first met him back in nineteen eighty-five. So everyone is speaking about how they've known and worked with him as a chief, but I'm going to take it way back, thirty-seven years, from when he first stepped in the department in nineteen eighty-six as a recruit for the twenty-seventh police cycle. And you all know, I mean, I've been around for a while, female, working GPD. You know, the reputation that police officers and firemen have in the agency. So as a young female and a watchful eye, hoping to have a career and listening to my father's advice about watching reputation, doing your best, trying to learn, having respect for, uh, your superiors and, and learning the job. Um, my observation, which, you know, to me is to the credit of Director Bernalio now, was when he was first, when he first started, I remember watching him and seeing how much of a family man he, he is and was back then. How he really, uh, although he may have, because of his prominence, even on his name alone, could have taken the fast track to a specialized unit, did not do that. Very humble as an officer, very respectful. He stayed on the streets as a patrolman for over five plus years, no, no, sir. And, and take on all the, you know, all the crappy assignments in his own humility. And I really came to admire and respect that about him. He always had his family along with him. He was very, uh, open to volunteering at many of our events and, uh, just very, very respectful as I watched him conduct himself with, uh, the public. And then, uh, moving forward now to, over the years and returning back to Guam after I had been gone for twenty years, kinda, you know, checking out the scene and see how everybody's doing, whatever had, whatever happened to who, who and all of that. I've been with the department now for seven years, since two thousand sixteen. And DOC has a, you, as you know, we have, tend to have a high turnover rate for directors. I have seen six directors come through, pass through in my seven years there. And I think it says a lot that of those six, three of them are here to endorse my current, uh, Director. Uh, so far, uh, in having met with him, uh, I appreciate that he has been very transparent in, uh, in telling us what his expectations are, in sharing with us his vision for our agency. And I also appreciate his boldness in changing things up. Uh, I say, you know how we, we were talking about the change in the organization chart and he actually put, as a division head, he put me in, uh, under the, the Security Division as well as our Parole Division. And, and, you know, we were having our little chit chat about what do we think this is going to happen? And I say, you know, in my evaluation of him historically and knowing Director Bernalio, I know that his intentions are well. And so what we have to do is continue to work with him and see where this is going to go. But it, I, things are, are on the up and up and, and looking good thus far. And I'm, I'm just here to say that I hope you all, I, I'm pretty sure that you will, uh, um, approve him as, uh, for our Director. And I, and I also want to say at this moment that for our former directors who are here, I, I want to thank them for the jobs that they have done, for hanging with us and for even stepping up to the plate and taking us through a lot of the issues. It's not easy, as I'll never forget, you know, former Director Carbelito saying that this is not a job that everybody is beating the doors down to get in. So anyone that we can get who has that experience is, uh, is so welcomed. And I really look forward to serving under Director Bernalio and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Congressman Underwood.
Buenos dias, senators. My name is Robert Underwood and, uh, I'm here to testify on behalf of Fred Bernalio in his nomination to be Director of the Department of Corrections. Uh, I'm going to go one better than all of them. I've known him since he was at least two years old. So I've known him the longest. Of course, I can't speak to his professional competence, uh, but all the others have spoken to his, uh, professional competence. And indeed, it's high testimony for him to have these individuals speak to his level of professionalism and his knowledge about his profession, which he brings a rich history of, not only as, uh, Chief of Police, which is probably pretty darn demanding, and as well as his service as a Marine. And I know he was, uh, he was in, in that activity as well. Uh, and, you know, so now he's going to be in charge of the, uh, most well-known residential facility on Guam and that has its own level of demands. And I think, I think, uh, Mr. Lamarena spoke to that. I mean, it's not, it's not just an issue of, uh, of law enforcement. It's an issue about you're taking care of human beings, have constitutional rights and you have a lot of legal restrictions upon you. Now, you know, it's going to, it's easy to, uh, discount my testimony because he is, after all, my nephew. And, uh, so that could be easily discounted. But I have to tell you, I have lots of nephews and nieces and I wouldn't testify for all of them, but him I would. Him, him I will. And, and I'll tell you this from my own personal experience. Uh, you know, you all have this, you all have this in your extended family. There's always somebody in your extended family that you trust implicitly. You trust implicitly in the basis of their, uh, uh, for personal safety issues or for holding on to your resources or for attending to your best interests. And he's one of those individuals. He really is. And so I, I've seen him, uh, mature. I've, I've seen him grow over the years, not only, uh, you know, he was a very diligent student. He used to work with my mother a lot. You know, my mother mentored him a lot when he was, uh, going to high school. So watch, just to, to watch him, uh, grow and to take all those positions on. So, uh, he's going to bring, uh, he, as where he always brings. He always brings a high level of professional service, a high sense of purpose, a high sense of, uh, commitment to, uh, professional standards and high moral standards. And I think, uh, that speaks to, uh, why he should be, uh, the Director of the Department of Corrections. And that in, in that capacity, uh, uh, you know, he, he has a very unusual way of, uh, blending not only his professional sense of leadership, but his also personal intellectual curiosity, which some of you might know about him. He reads voraciously and he understands those things and he tries to apply them to, uh, his professional life and whatever he's doing professionally. So I endorse him heartily in a way that I might not endorse every nephew or niece I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Congressman. I feel like you're, all your nieces and nephews are going to call you tonight. Check their rankings. Is there anyone else, uh, here to provide testimony? If not, uh, Chief Bernalio, would you, uh, do you have an opening statement or a presentation?
Hafade, sun buenes, Honorable Senator Barnett and members of the thirty-seven Guam Legislature. My name is Fred Bernalio Jr. and, um, I'm here as an, uh, appointed as the Acting Director for the Department of Corrections. I appreciate and thank you and the members of the thirty-seven Guam Legislature for providing me the opportunity to testify and present information for your review in relation to my appointment as Acting Director of Department of Corrections. I am humbled and I want to express my appreciation to Honorable Governor of Guam Lourdes, A. Leon Guerrero, Lieutenant Governor Joshua F. Tenorio for their support, trust and confidence for the challenge given to lead a great organization, Department of Corrections. I'm also humbled and appreciate the support from my family members who are here today, friends, relatives, and members of the Department of Corrections and the public that are present here for the confirmation hearing. Since assuming Acting Director of Department of Corrections in early August of this year, I have had the opportunity to meet dedicated and committed employees of the Department of Corrections who have shared their insights about the challenges of working at the department. Uh, the challenges of recruitment and retention of corrections officers to maintain a sufficient level for security, addressing the infrastructure deficiencies of the facilities impacted by Typhoon Ma'war, and the increasing inmate population has tested the motivation and faith of the leadership and all members of the Department of Corrections to perform and work together. I am amazed at the resolve of all Department of Corrections personnel to remain positive and contribute to the mission of the department. I'm concerned about the rising inmate population and the impact this has with the safety and security of Department of Corrections staff and other inmates slated to be released. As a former corrections officer that served with the United States Marine Corps, I observed the success of programs that were designed to prepare inmates for their release to the community. I observed the conditions of the facilities and security systems in place that were needed to ensure the inmates and security staff were working in safe and secure conditions. With this experience I shared among the leadership, we have started a process of creating a strategic plan, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. I received the support from Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio to work the process of planning among the staff of Department of Corrections. Today, with the planning process ongoing, I'm ready to highlight the goals formulated currently and discuss what this would look like for the department from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. So I'm prepared to answer questions all you may have. And I want to say thank you again to everyone and thank you again for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Chief. I want to thank everyone, uh, for providing, uh, their testimony. Obviously, I got some questions and then we'll turn it over to my colleagues. So if, if there's nothing further testimony or if you want to hang out, it's up to you. But Chief, uh, if you could, we could just start right there. You, in your written testimony here, you say you're ready to highlight goals formulated currently and discuss, uh, what your strategic plan currently and discuss what your strategic plan will look like for the department. The abridged version, please.
Okay. Well, first of all, Senator Barnett, you know, the mission is stated in the sources, section 91, 5, chapter 90, Corrections Title IX, Guam Code Annotated Crimes and Corrections. The mission of the Department of Corrections is they shall protect the public from the destructive action of law offenders through control and rehabilitation. It shall provide staff services for the judiciary, parole board, probation officers, and interested agencies of the executive branch. The vision statement that we've been discussing on our plan, part of this planning process, is that we envision a Department of Corrections Guam that is modernized with security systems technologies, has both a sufficient level of quality-trained civilian and a uniform employee workforce, and capable with the financial and material resources to efficiently and effectively mean our agency's public safety mission. And these are our values. And today, yesterday, I was given this pin that the late former Director Bob Camacho had purchased, and, and some of the Department of Correction employees have this. And it states our values. We value honesty, integrity, and courage. And that's what you would see also in the logo, the Corrections logo, among all members of our department. We value honorable public service that we are entrusted with, to serve our community, our island community, as public safety professionals, and value the challenges to protect life and property aligned with the security and rehabilitation work performed. The Department of Corrections official logo symbolizes these values, and this is how the Department of Corrections logo looks. These are five goals that we've indicated on a, as part of our strategic plan process. Goal one, establish clear span of control lines of authority that depicts the Department of Corrections Guam for all employees' awareness and understanding of the unit, section, functions, and accountability. Share with members of the public, stakeholders, how the Department of Corrections Guam has been organized to meet the public safety mandate mission. Goal two, the Department of Corrections will have a sufficient level of corrections officers with support and external community resources that greatly improves and enhances the safety and security of all Department Corrections employees, facilities, and prisoner population. The third goal, the inmates incarcerated at Department of Corrections will be secured and safe from threats or harm confined in facilities that have suitable conditions for space, a healthy environment, and provided the opportunities with programs that involve rehabilitation activities. And the fourth goal is Department of Correction facility conditions are improved with modernized security systems, adequate inmate confinement space, sufficient facility space for inmate rehabilitation services, medical services, mental health treatment services, and secure facilities for department employees' workspace. And the last, the fifth goal is Department of Corrections will have an array of financial funding resources that draw from to meet its mission annually from 2023 to 2026 while mitigating the increasing cost of administrative operations and functions of the department. And I can provide a copy of these five goals that were part of our strategic planning process, Senators.
Thank, thank you, Chief. Testimony from, I think, Mrs. Tajama had said that you landed on the job and you started changing things up. Can you just provide the committee with some examples of, of some of the things that you changed up?
Yes. Well, part of the examination, as you could see, the first goal that I had indicated is this, this organizational chart, you know, the span of control. And I recently looked at the, when I held a command leadership meeting and it was at the, where the parole offices in Agania was at, I looked at, I, I looked at the organizational chart. And one thing, of course, that was, why I think it was a necessity is because in the beginning, the former deputy director, who is not with us anymore, had indicated they were working on an organizational chart. But I like to always start off knowing where the span of control, where, who are doing what, what functions and that are critical. And one of the, and I have a copy of it. I brought up that, the recent unit directive that I wrote down, I mean, personal order that I wrote down, showing the span of control. And what it basically does is we will have an administrative, administrative side of the department. It's really critical, and it has the deputy director, then the administrative services chief. That's being held right now by Major Anton Uggan. And then we would, what was also critical is having a, a training officer, running training and staff development. And then you would have your personal officer. So it's more like an HR environment. And then we would have also our administrative service officer, and then our programs coordinator, which is like a grant. And then you would have also a list, a logistics and supply property. We don't have a, we used to have, and I heard this from the staff, a, what you call a property management officer. And that is a necessity because I want to know where all the properties are in the department. I want to know where all the vehicles are at. One of the first things we did basically is we start, I got a whole inventory of where the vehicles are at, what, what defects they have, and start marking them with our logo. We're gonna be a Department of Corrections and part of that. We need to have those vehicles marked, and that was one of the first things that was done. I had an unmarked vehicle that said, it was assigned to me as the Director of Corrections. I, I, I immediately sent that to the parole office and assigned it to the parole officers. They have to check on the parolees 24/7 and make sure that they're complying with their parole conditions. So when I go to work, I'm going to work with my own private vehicle. And then the operations side is where the warden is at. And this comes from my experience of working at different correction facilities. In the Guam Police Department, your highest uniform officer is the police colonel or police commander. Well, this warden now has a lot. He now works with the casework, Therese Tajama. That's critical because when they're looking at these classifications, max, medium, minimum in, minimum out, especially with the recent thing you heard in the news about we're having some of the inmates do work credit, helping DPW or, or Department of Parks and Recreation for some work outside. The warden and the casework division work hand in hand to make sure these are, they're screened, the proper inmates there. Under operations are the security platoons, Major Lozama, I believe she, she's on sick leave, you know, but she's critical with the, with the warden there. And then they have a sort, and then we even have a K-9 unit. So now that that organization is really clear and concise, it makes it easier now when we have our command staff meetings about where I expect, when I'm tasking and giving out some of the directions.
So it, it's your opinion, obviously, that kind of reconfiguring the organizational structure is gonna streamline the operations of DOC?
Yes. I believe it'll make it a little bit more now, easier. And I, just even in the discussion early this morning in the management staff meeting that I, that I had this morning, I told the warden, anytime now that you have a situation with an inmate that you're thinking, you know, might have a behavioral problem, there's case, the case division right there. You don't have to go to the admin side, and it's different. Now it's, it's, it's more simple and easier, flexible for the warden to do that.
I know that a former director, Senator Tony Lamarena, had characterized the job of a director as a job that nobody is beating down the door to get. And actually, I would say it's the opposite. It's almost like sometimes it seems like leadership at DOC is beating on the door to get out, right? Because we've seen so many directors, and now the recent news of the resignation of the deputy director. So I noticed when you kind of went down your organizational chart that was restructured, that deputy director slot is pretty prominent up there. So do you plan, or are there plans to get a new deputy director? Are you moving forward with that one?
I, I have had discussions with the governor on the deputy director. One of the, the area, the points that we looked at is because of the situation with our manpower. A deputy director's salary is somewhere in the area of 90 some thousand, right? And in my, in my conversation with the governor, she, she's given me her support and the decision I'm gonna make. With something like $90,000, I, it's just been made, as the previous former director said, that I started a reserve program. We started a corrections reserve program. For some 90,000, I can get 15 corrections reserve officers, right? And reprogram some of that, the funding from that salary. And, or every single, or, or possibly another thing that we talked about is the, and this is part of the strategic planning process, we could get either three to four security, armed security officers, government positions at our department, and they can handle part of the perimeter security for Department of Corrections in Agania, and also Agania, you know, with that, with the salary of that. So I'm always looking at, you know, the, what would be the cost benefit of that, right? But how that would be used.
I think I got a Q-tip in my ears because I'm not used to hearing this. So you're basically saying that you can continue to move forward with, without a deputy director, and you want to reallocate that salary to other areas where you feel it provides more bang for the people of Guam's buck?
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I, I was going through the transcripts from the last time we had DOC under the former director, Carbelito, and then obviously Deputy Director Toigui. And there was a lot of discussion about the K-9 unit. And so now that the former deputy has resigned, can you kind of report the status of, of that program and, and how, or if his resignation has impacted the implementation of, of the K-9 program?
Thank you for that. The, the, the K-9 program, you know, and because when I used to be former Chief of Police too, having a K-9 program, you know, is, it's gonna cost. It's, it's, it's very costly, but at the same time, there's benefits. For Department of Corrections, of course, the mission of this K-9 is because we have a situation with contraband, you know, drugs and stuff, and even cell phones being thrown over the wire. And it's a, it was, it's a good strategic action, you know, of part of planning to include a K-9 unit. Now, part of that cost, I think there was air, I was watching the, the roundtable discussion that, part of it was using ARP money, and I believe part of it was using the revolving fund, the Department of Corrections revolving fund. And it's limited right now, but the, the new budget, you know, the fiscal year starts October 1. But what I want to do is see, and, and right now, I've been informed by the K-9 supervisor right now, who is Captain Pakaiwi, that the former--
Sorry, Chief, K-9 supervisor at DOC or GPD?
Department of Corrections.
Okay.
Yeah. Captain Pakaiwi, Department of Corrections. He was one of the ones who came back from that training. Part of the plan was the, one of the individuals, and this is getting way down into the weeds detail, Bruce Flores is one of the person who is gonna be assigned one of the, the dogs, but he has to be trained as a handler. We, I got word from Captain Pakaiwi that the former deputy is willing to train the, the handler Bruce Flores. It'll be probably the first week of October, and it's just a matter of writing a letter to the airport director and letting him know that Lieutenant, it's, it's now the K-9, he, I, I believe he heads the airport, Lieutenant Atogui now from the K-9, will do his training of, of our handler, right? And, and then now that will be taken care of. As far as finances, I submitted a memorandum of understanding, a proposal to Chief Steve Ignacio, because the Guam Police Department K-9 unit is inactive. And in that memorandum, it, it indicates in there that we're willing to work with Chief Ignacio in regards to, since this, this K-9 unit is inactive, we can assist them on the situation of narcotics, raids, or, you know, or anytime he needs, and even crowd control because these K-9 dogs are also trained not only as narcotics or drugs or cell phone, but also as part of use of force procedures with, with, and it's like a deterrent. And it adds a little bit more of, of support in those kind of activities. So that memorandum of understanding, I, I already signed off on it, and it's heading over to Chief Ignacio. Now, there've been other agencies, according to Captain Pakaiwi had told me, they're, they're watching to see what kind of support we can do in terms of partnership. One of them is the Guam Customs and Quarantine. Of course, it's also still the airport because the, the airport has a K-9 unit there.
That's encouraging to hear. And actually, I was in communication with the former deputy director, and he as well gave his commitment that he would see all of the necessary training through with the Department of Corrections. Because that was my concern in the previous hearing was that, you know, we were putting all our eggs kind of in this, this basket with an unclassified political appointee, and I was worried that they could leave the Department of Corrections and, you know, DOC would be high and dry with the K-9 program. So that's encouraging to hear that.
Yeah.
You're seeing it through and that there's some kind of partnership, dog share with, with GPD is, is what you're looking at, right?
Yeah, we're looking at that. And, and the whole thing about this too is that anytime our K-9 unit is involved with GPD in the seizing of drugs, there's the potential, especially it gets adopted by the feds, asset forfeiture sharing, and we hope that we can get part of that sustained.
So if your dog sniffs it, you guys want the, the funds?
A portion, a portion of the narcotics that's contra--
Chief, I just had a few, sorry, and I'll, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues. So again, in the last hearing, the former director, Carbelito, had described the situation with the amount of officers versus the number of inmates and the situation with overtime as manageable. And I know we had met prior to this hearing, and you had told me that there are 825 population. That's a combination of detainees and inmates. You've got 430 detainees, 150 corrections officers. So obviously, those numbers don't add up. Would you call the situation manageable? Are you making it more manageable? And in, and in what ways are you planning to mitigate overtime and, and not just that, but burnout of, of officers and, and potential morale issues?
Well, I, I, I've meant with the, the staff, you know, that's one of the first things I've meant with the security staff. And one of the, you know, it's right on target, this, this master plan for the brand-new prison predicted that in 2023 would have about 850 inmates. We are at 850 inmates. It's just right on the target. Not, so we have a staff of corrections officers of 150, and that's short staff. On the last cabinet meeting I held with the governor, I used the word, "It's dangerous." When I went down into the Agania lockup and I saw the crowding thereof, and even the warden advised me, you're gonna see four people in a cell. And, and to me, that's, you know, anything can happen. You know, they, I think over a month ago, they had a riot, and, you know, and that's why, and especially if we have incidents of injury, any, any inmate being injured or corrections officer, GPD is being called. They'll get an injured person's report. One, I think, one inmate after his, we took the report of injured person report, when he got released, switched it to, "I was assaulted." And that's why we're covering, making sure we're covering our bases, to make sure that we highlight this. And some of this right now is, we're, I'm disseminating it to the Office of Homeland Security and Civil Defense, so it's documented, this situation that we have. And that's why I think everyone's feeling a little bit more comfortable, the warden, when we're hearing that 32 recruits are gonna be reporting to us within, I think, before the end of this month. Quickly, and Department of Administration's been helping us out to get new people in. At the same time, our recruitment for the Corrections Reserve Force, that helps on. And then with the budget that laps into law, we can afford, you know, thanks again to the legislature and to the governor, probably do two more cycles of about 20 some, to pick up the force back to about 230, which is very comfortable for Department of Corrections.
I appreciate your honesty, Director Bredalio, and your assessment of the situation as dangerous. And in our sit-down a couple days ago, you had talked about some, some ideas in utilizing maybe the National Guard to assist in things like perimeter watch. So can you expand on that and, and forward movement with those ideas?
Yes. Part of the strategic, part of our strategic planning process that we're involved in right now until we finalize it, I mentioned too that I believe it was the state of Florida, the governor activated their, their National Guard for nine months. And, and there was another state, I forgot what, what governor it was, but theirs was a year, right? And they were, they were sort of undergoing the same experience too, overcrowding, shortage of manpower, right? And when you do that, there, you know, the, of course, there will be an executive order, and then there'll have to be some mutual agreement between the garden and department on what the, those guard members will be doing. Will it be doing, will it be during their weekend drill or whatever? I mean, what, what would be the size of it? And from what I assess, especially being a former military reserves-- And from what I assess, especially being a former military reserves with the military police in Radio Baragada, it could be a platoon size, right? That can cover both the perimeter of Mangila and also portion of that platoon down in Hagania Detention Facility. And then in the aspects of that, not only will they do perimeter security, but they can ensure that they're also trained for riot control, so that they need to be called into the facility to assist our corrections officers. That's one action plan, listed in action plan as an option.
Okay. In my short tenure as the Chair of Public Safety with Oversight with the Department of Corrections, I've often asked about the use of inmates on work detail, right? And the answer I'd gotten was that, you know, we didn't have enough corrections officers to monitor these inmates, but I know that there was a video, viral video that gone on about illegal dumping up at Chalera Ramirez, and you had told me that you were able to get some of the inmates up there assisting with that cleanup. So how were you able to do that? And is this a sign that we're going to see more of this? Because I know whenever I go out there, you know, people always talk about the old days, right? My grandfather was a former warden with the Department of Corrections, and, you know, I remember you'd always see inmates out there bushcutting, and I mean, it was a great use of, you know, the inmate population, right? And so now that we've started this, do you anticipate being able to do this more, where we have inmates or and/or detainees out in public assisting with various efforts to clean up?
Yes, that's correct, Senator. The work credit program is that if the inmate does 40 hours of work, they can get one day off their sentence. And what happened is, these are minimum out classification, right? And the warden again, with the case management team, look at these inmates that are minimum out classified, and choose the ones who are going to be able to go out. I think, and I did a memorandum of understanding, one went to Department of Public Works, one to Department of Parks and Recreation, because they'll have probably some work in some of the parks and stuff besides the highways. But a minimum of five to 10 inmates could be assigned. We transport them, we'll come back for them for their meals for lunch, and the agency, DPW monitors them and supervises them to include Parks and Rec. They'll monitor and supervise. Now, part of the memorandum of understanding that already has been signed is that they're sending their supervisors, both Parks and Rec and DPW, Public Works, to our training, to a four-to-eight-hour minimum training, so they know what are the restrictions of our corrections officers. And we did that about a week ago, that they had individuals do that. It was simply just getting a partnership with them and knowing what the restrictions are. And then we'll use our parole officers to do spot checks and make sure that if there's any problem with the inmate, you know, in their behavior up there, they can be taken out, they can be ticked out of that project, and they have a lot to lose, right? I mean, they're looking forward to reducing their sentence. As a matter of fact, this morning, Senator, when I had a meeting with the warden, he said, "Why one day off for 40? What about, you think, two days off?" And I said, "Now, that's something with the legislature, warden, you know, if anyone wants to change the work credit program, two days off of a sentence."
Yeah, I don't know who's going to be beaten down the door for that one. Thank you, Chief. I'm going to defer to my Vice Chair, Senator Chris Duennas, and then we'll go down the line. Senator Duennas?
This is Massey, Mr. Chair, and you certainly covered most of the bases. I think maybe I'll just focus on this one area. In the early meetings that I had with the chairman and other chiefs, Corrections as well as GPD, this perennial issue that's being discussed from the recruiting side, and I'm glad you have, of course, your 32 manpower coming on board, as well as, you know, your ability for your next cycles. But moving into your next cycles, the primary issue that kept coming up was the individuals, Department of Administration going out and doing their, you know, their attempts to get qualified applicants is the passing of the test and the ability to do that in order to be able to qualify as a post-commission. You know, one of the gentlemen who stood that up as well, can you, have you been able to dig down into that to make sure that your, kind of your pipeline is increased for your future needs as you, you know, man up?
Thank you for that question, Senator. I recently attended a post-commission meeting, and it was interesting, because we were actually discussing in there, you know, some of the qualifications, the criteria that needs to be done. Department of Corrections officers are category-one officers, right? And what I've discovered when I made my assessment is that there are several corrections officers, although they went through training in firearms in the beginning of their basic law enforcement training, don't have a firearms identification card, right? And it was surprising. So as category-one officers, peace officers, actually directed that all the corrections officers right now, if you don't have a firearms identification card, you will show proof you went down to records and identification, GPD, and applied for firearms identification. Now, what happens there, Senator, is that when they do that, they're getting into the FBI national crime information, you know? I'm just hoping that nothing pops up, you know? But they do a thorough check of corrections officers, you know, I mean, the correction officer who's applying for a firearms identification, right? But one of the interesting things is, I, when I was at the post-commission, I knew it was being audio, I think, recorded, right, for the minutes. I had said that when I was chief of police, I asked Department of Administration, "Why are we still paying something like $500 or $400 for every individual officer to take a psychological examination?" When I was in the post-commission, we actually changed the language to say it doesn't have to be by a psychiatrist, right? And we're talking about if you have 32 or 60 applicants, 60 times 400 or $500 for a psychological examination. I know of hand in the states, there's a vendor that will test an entire group, maybe of 25 to 30 in a room, and the diagnostic, it was designed by a psychologist for that assessment task, and they may say, "Four of you, who we saw your response, go over to this site," you know, and not, of course, disclose the situation, not suitable for law enforcement position, right? But that's more, the biggest bang for your buck, you know, when it comes down to versus all the law, all the different law enforcement agencies, and might have to pay 400 to 500, and then even if we get a psychologist on board, that's still delays time, because now all the agencies are running to us and say, "Can we use your psychologist for psychological exams?" So that's one of the things, Senator, that came up on this recent post-commission meeting. It'll be on the minutes there. And hopefully, the DOA Representative Francis, I told him, "Can you just check with the DOA Director and that?" Because that was a question I posed during that time.
Yeah, and that's, I just, I wanted to mention that, you know, of course, obviously, you have the acumen, the capabilities, the experience to, you know, to take on this duty and responsibility. And I think that to, this, one of the solutions has to be to centralize this within the post-commission, so that, you know, there shouldn't be this back and forth anymore before, between Department of Administration. I think we need to clean that up, so that we know that that pipeline is always strong no matter what. And I think you're on it, and that is basically making sure the criteria and the like are at the most acceptable levels for your entry to get them in. And I think that that was, it would seem like that that was one of the primary barriers. Just one additional question, I'm sure that you've also faced this as the chief of police, and now, you know, how are you, how was your view upon arriving on your turnover and what you're seeing in terms of your funding, and also your execution of your internal drug testing program?
Right now, recently, we actually had 100% drug testing that we did. And of course, you know, that was budgeted, you know, and we're going to continue to do that in the next fiscal year, to ensure that we can do some random drug testing. It might not be 100%, but at least we're doing that in quality control for the apartment. In terms of the budget, the biggest, biggest amount of debt that we have, again, and I had a conversation with the governor, is our billing that we owe GMH. There have been states, again, and I had mentioned this, that I believe Texas could be, that they're charging the inmate for their medical, you know, run, you know, they need to see a doctor. These inmates, some are in detainee status and have some health insurance, but once they get confined, this is what I heard from my staff, that their family says, "Oh, since you're confining them, then we're taking them off the medical insurance, and you guys are going to take care of Department of Corrections." That's a big challenge, and it's a hard conversation to have among policymakers, because there may have been some constitutional challenges. I don't know what today's current Office of the Attorney General would say to that if there was some certain legislation that says, "Okay, maybe a small percentage should be paid by the inmate," maybe. And that's where we get back to this conversation of commissary, you know, because when you have a commissary thing, which the intent is that portions of money that families put in there for their inmate, some of it maybe, and I've heard about this in other practices, 10% of that could be used for their medical bill when they were, you know, incarcerated.
And in closing, you certainly have my support, Chief. You know, as a director on the three agencies I worked, I also never used an assigned vehicle. I commend you for that. You know, the line staff and those there are the ones who need every piece of equipment that you have. Unfortunately, I was able to get away with this as well. I never had a deputy at DOA. But I did, I did the same thing you did. I reprogrammed that money for you service workers. So I commend you once again for ensuring that you're, can you have an immediate infusion of that revenue for reserve officers. You seem to really be stepping up the complement and getting on the ball with that. And I think your staff, and especially the community, as far as the safety of the community, we all appreciate all of those efforts. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Senator Titeguit?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everyone who came to testify earlier. I'm sure Fred really appreciates that, and everything. I think that those who came to testify actually described you very well. I've known you, I've known you for quite a while, and we were kind of like campaign buddies too, when we were on the campaign trail, always trying to help each other out. And so it's definitely true to form that you're not only humble, but you're always willing to help somebody if they need it, regardless, you know, regardless of what side you're, you know, your political views are on. That's what I like about you. You treat everybody fairly. So, you know, a lot of the questions too were answered, but I am quite concerned, since the 35th Guam Legislature, we had tried to provide some kind of funding for the construction of DOC. In the 36th, we tried to set some money aside. Now, if I'm not mistaken, there was about $800,000 that was set aside and used for the A and E part of it, the engineering plans? Can you give me the status of where exactly those plans are to date? Has it gone through the Attorney General? Has it gone to DPW? Is it, there is a request for bid? Are we going to go in phases so you can get a better? And then last, but not least, how much money do you have set aside to get this at least Phase 1 going?
Yeah. Well, what had happened is already DPW, I actually got, went down there, and I joined Major Antonugin, who's been very instrumental. Actually, they even thanked him on this master plan for all the work he was doing. And there were some bidders, right? And this is for the architectural design of the, of the new prison, right? And it's going to be on four phases, right? And it's going to, of course, it's going to be, it's going to cost money. So I had met with the governor and informer that I was going to approach even Congressman Moylan, who came over and visited, right, and said that in order for this, the construction of, especially after, they're going to do a lot of soil testing there, and they're going to go in phases, and some of the facilities will have to be broken down while they're building and constructing, but they're going to do some soil testing, because you just don't build anything on top of a soil. There's a lot of stuff that's going to be done on that. That's going to be costing a lot of money, right? And Congressman Moylan, what I'm going to be doing is working to keep Congressman Moylan informed and the governor informed, because it, right now, for our budget, I think our current budget, I believe we don't have anything budgeted for the construction of these, of these phases. But here's the thing, during Tafamawar, several of our facilities were damaged. FEMA came over and did, and they're currently still doing site inspections. They came to my office today. But the biggest, most highest priority, Senator, is that we have air conditioning systems that went down in the dome, the domes, and your temperatures there could range into 80 to 90, you know, it's like hot, even the corrections officers. So FEMA is making it a priority, they've informed me, for part of that, we'll be reimbursed and it's, we'll be able to expend, to fix those facilities up. We, the warden has also advised me that during, when the budget, I mean, when the fiscal year starts in October, we'll be spending not only on the priority, we already have quotes for their conditioning systems, but we're also going to look at post-18 renovations to alleviate the overcrowding that's happening. And inmates have been helping out in the renovations and that, as part of their work, minimum inmates, we just give some of the materials there while they're slowly getting that post-18 refurbished and stuff.
Okay, so let's go to Phase 1. How much is Phase 1 going to cost?
It could be somewhere in the neighborhood of $32 million just for-
$32 million? How much money do you have right now for this?
Oh, shea, right now, our budget is only up to $33 million right now. So we won't, we don't-
Have any money?
Again, like I said, we have no money set aside.
What happened to the $800,000? Was that used to do the architect and engineering of the plan? Or was that the book in front of you that cost $800,000?
Yeah, let me, I believe, let me find down and make sure I got the right information about how much was spent just on the master plan, right?
Okay, so we're not sure where the $800,000 went?
Yeah.
Okay, has the Attorney General had the opportunity to review the plans? Or even the bid? Is there a bid out there right now?
I'm not aware whether the Attorney General was aware of this. I'll just let you know, Senator, my meaning, some of my command leadership have never seen this plan.
Okay.
So I, I have to start there to make sure everyone reads this plan, you know, because they'll be on the same page from the warden to all the top leadership in my, in the agency.
This has been a long, ongoing, you know, for quite some time, you know, since I've been in the 35th to discuss this building of the facility, you know? And right now, we're just sitting here, you know, how many years later, nothing has really happened. So Fred, this is really priority, considering the population growth that was happening, and of course, what the report stated. So what are you doing as far as like, you know, finding ways to, oh, how do you feel about deportation policy for FSM citizens and considering, do you consider it a priority to help lessen the population of DOC?
Senator, you just hit a strategy that the Office of the Attorney General has indicated that they're looking at. So that one, if that reduces the population, for me, that will be fine. Another thing too, that was mentioned too, is in reducing the population, as I met with the Judiciary Justice Robert Torres, and he said they're looking at the potential electronic, you know, electronic monitoring, but, you know, we still have 400-plus detainees still there. That has to start, you know, with probation, you know, prior to them being, you know, confined and taking up space. Another area that I'm exploring at, and I mentioned this to the governor, is the United States Military Department of Defense has a corrections brig up there at Naval Base Guam. They have a brig. I used to be Naval Security, and I know that they have that correctional facility up there. I don't know whether Anderson might have a correctional brig, or, and the thing is, what I'm getting at is, Department of Defense works with DOJ, maybe the federal detainees that are down- that are down there in Nagana can be taken up there to, to the base and then that leaves room for the, the 200 some detainees that I have. Some of them are federal, they can go and be, and go into the D O D thing. That's a proposal that, an option that we're exploring also.
Thank you for that. Thank you for thinking outside the box with, with regards to that. And hopefully the federal government will also have the staff to be able to man those prisons, additional prisons. Speaking of federal, what is the latest on the lawsuit? I think it was back in 2020, the one for Hagana? Is that still ongoing lawsuit or has that been resolved?
I haven't been briefed on that, on the lawsuit, an ongoing lawsuit. I can check on that.
Yeah, you might want to look into that one as well. Retention of officers, other than I know was talked about earlier about, you know, over time, many of them are leaving because it's just, you know, it's a lot of work when you only have 150 officers. So, you know, other than Fred, you know, the, the violin story of, you know, we're trying to bring in recruiting people in, I'm hoping that you also look at finding ways to retain, you know, the officers that you have right now, you know, anything you can do to assist them?
I, I think, Senator, I think the legislature, working with the governor, has done a great job adding incentive pay, you know, in the beginning of a starting salary for a corrections officer. I heard that not only do they get the hazardous pay, they get an incentive pay or something, you know? And that brings their salary as starting at 27,000. But then again, it's the environment of the corrections officers. We just had one Semitist resignation, but it wasn't because of, it's because of plans with the military and other stuff, right? There were other opportunities.
Please look into that. You know, it's retaining those good officers that are already there that, you know, need help. I hope you have the open door policy as well. I know you, you're a good man. Of course, of course, right? You said, of course, Senator.
I, I have an open door policy and I have a window sometimes with the anonymous letters coming over to me and I say, okay, let me read those. No names in them, but some suggestions. So it's like, suggestion box.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. And that you do entertain those anonymous letters too, because it's very helpful. Well, Fred, I wish you the very best. You know, we've known each other for a long time and as well as an open door that you have, I have an open door as well. So if there's anything I can do to help, I would really like to get involved with getting the, the construction of this new facility up, beginning with phase one. You know, I know it's, it's not 32 million on phase one, if I'm not mistaken, it's phase, all phases on phase four is, no, I think it's 100 and
It could be, it could range up to 62 to something.
That's right.
The cost just keeps going up.
It's about 110 million right now for all phases. So I think the first phase, you're right, is 32 million and we need to find it. Unfortunately, we tried to give you that money through earned income tax reimbursement, but we found out through the federal government, it could not happen. And there was only 5 million, a drop in the bucket. But if there's any time to look for bond borrowing or any time to look for grants and fund, now's the time and I'd, I'd like to help out if I can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Good luck to you.
Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Fred, for accepting the nomination. I mean, I see that you hit the ground running and you already have implemented solutions in the short time that you've been acting director, and I want to see your work through.
Okay.
And I appreciate all the innovation and your dedication to, to getting these problems solved. I think it's great that you've already have a plan to, a strategic plan and especially you want to prioritize the greatest needs of Department of Corrections. And, you know, I, I want to support, I'm about to support your confirmation and, or nomination and I hope to hear more from you. I mean, you obviously are combining a confirmation hearing with a oversight, it seems. So thank you for, for, you know, answering all these questions and I do appreciate your level-headedness, your can-do attitude, your concern for our community. So, Sis Massey. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Lujan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Fred. Want to congratulate you and
All right, thank you.
Congratulate you and Lily on your, your appointment. I thought I saw her earlier.
Lily had to go to, she's teaching at G C C, had to go to her class.
Absolutely. You know, so for transparency purposes and all that, I just got to tell you, Mr. Chairman, that we grew up in the same neighborhood. My mom and dad were very close with his mom and dad. My mom worked with your grandmother as well, they taught together. And you know, for a moment there, I, I was, I was, I didn't know where I was, I was going to raise your hand and say, Biba, Biba G B. Because I also ran the Guterres Bernaldo campaign as well. So can I still continue, Mr. Chair? Okay, no, I, I don't want to be voted, you know, out and saying you have a conflict and I won't be able to vote for his, his nomination. But, but, but thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again for accepting the, the, again, the, the appointment. I got to say as well that, you know, I know as mentioned earlier about having, of course, different political sides and all that, but you know, your qualifications outweigh basically your, your political stance and all that. And it shows because you were chief police for a Republican, Republican governor and ran as a Democrat and all this. And I got to say that, of course, during that campaign of the gubernatorial, and gubernatorial campaign, that Governor Guterres wanted a, a strong, a strong advocate for, for law enforcement. And during the interview process, I guess, I mean, you just, you just, you know, took it out of the field basically with, with that and, you know, shared in the debate. And so that was, that was why that you were, you were chosen for Lieutenant Governor running mate for, for that particular campaign. So again, your strong background with the, of course, law enforcement. And then we looked at it as well as this, hey, we have, we have Fred Bernaldo as Lieutenant Governor, you know, it's going to save us money. We don't need a chief of police. He could also be chief of police. So that will be one, one area that we can, we can save money on, right? All jokes aside, Fred, and we talked about this in the past and, and I hear you bring the conversation up again as, as, as well. But, but let me, let me ask you this, because you know, the Department of Corrections, and I know in a, a previous oversight here with the previous acting director, the programs that were once in place, like the ability for, for the inmates to, to get their either high school, their GED and, and maybe college credits and all that, I know they were hampered by, by COVID. Is that back in place? I mean, what is the, the situation with, with that?
Yeah, yeah, the situation, it went as far back as COVID where this work credit program, they weren't allowed to
And school, and school credit as well, right?
Yeah, they were, they were so short staffed, they couldn't have security for them. But now with this partnership with DPW and Parks for Work Credit, these are minimum amount they can go. Now, we, we have a program, I believe it was like a work release program, I'm looking at, I'm reviewing that right now, and it's related to the education thing where they'll be dropped off at the Guam Community College or U O G or, you know, maybe an arrangement of, because we have G M H up there and we have mental health, you know, the behavioral health and wellness. I can't see why we wouldn't be able to, if we can allow some space for instruction for GED classes or something like that, right? Small, small groups at a time, right? And, and get the inmates who are ready to be released or soon and fit that classification, you know, they're not a threat, right? And they'll be able to continue their education, you know, getting a GED or getting, continuing on their education goals, right? Or what training that they need and skill. I heard that the Guam Trades Academy was very instrumental in, in helping some of our inmates to the point that I was told by the warden this morning that some of our inmates are instructor qualified, right? So the instructors right there, the inmate is, is skilled to do the instruction themselves. And I'm certainly going to be supportive to try and see what we could do to, to do that. But at the same time, look at what, what were the security concerns and that, you know, because I used to remember even attending the Guam Community College for my associate's degree, there was some DOC inmates that were in the classroom right next to me. And then, so it's some program that they had, and I remember just seeing the DOC van parked out and waiting for them, right? So it could be a manpower, that manpower issue.
Sure, okay. You know, one of the other things too, that we, we dealt with in our office is a, an inmate that was released, it was, I think, in prison for, I think it's 25 years, it was pretty, pretty hideous, hideous crime, but was released. And one of the things that the office, what he and his family sought with our office was he had to pay restitution to the victim's family. The problem with that, and he had to get a job. The problem with that was he couldn't get a job. He couldn't get a job, couldn't get an ID. This person was not from, from, originally from the U S, but has become a U S citizen. And over the course of either 25 or 25 plus years, I guess nobody wanted anything to do with him and his family or something like that. And so all his papers were gone, papers not to be found anywhere. But he has court records and he was given, I think it's probation department, I think it was probation, right? That gave him, you know, this thing to, to bring to reven tax, to, to be issued a, an ID. But reven tax wouldn't take it, wouldn't honor it. And so these are the, these are some of the things that, that some of the inmates who are transitioning, I mean, I, I hope there's a transition process before they actually go out and they have to pay restitution, they have to work. I mean, it's bad enough that employers are hesitant to, to hire inmates, let alone to try to get IDs from the government of Guam, to try to get a job. So finally had to call the director. I mean, and we shouldn't have to do that, there should be a process to be able to, you know, there's some kind of record and I know the court has their records and all this and he did have a passport, he, he had all that, but there's no word to be found, at least not in, in his family, but the court definitely had, had some records of, of his citizenship and things of that nature. And it's just, maybe didn't, they didn't want to look, all that. But he was turned down numerous times. He was told to come, you know, come back time and time again, and each time they met a different person and each time it was told, there was, you know, that wasn't good enough. So, you know, I hope that in the, in the process that, again, in the transition coming out and they're having to pay restitution, having to try to find, find work, you know, the first step is, is trying to get a legitimate ID to be able, and again, with that, he didn't, he's got a social security number, but he doesn't have a social security card. So he has to attain all that and he has to, he has to prove it, but these, these entities that have it require an ID for him to, 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 to avail of, of, you know, his, his requests. That's one of the problems. But let me ask you as well, in regards to, to the overcrowding that you have up there, does the overcrowding prevent you from, because I know you're, you're very, you're very proactive in, in looking at prison industries. Would, would that overcrowding prevent type of prison? I know, you know, the work thing is part of the industries, but in manufacturing or things of that nature, something unique?
Actually, you know, because I, I, you know, part of the overcrowding, some of them is the challenges of, especially if you have four to a cell. And then there was even the, I think there was even the issue of someone bringing up about when do we have those mattresses to be supplied, right? Because there was a issue that I heard on one time on the round table, I think it was the round table was talked about that they're ordering the, that, you know, it isn't a regular mattress that have those steel springs, those can be weaponized, right? So it's a fire retardant kind of thing, right? But I heard there was a prison that actually had prisoners, inmates, making mattresses, those fire retardant. So what, what was needed is just the fabric, the sewing machine. And when I brought that up, I, I believe I had a short discussion with Gita, they were saying, maybe there could be a grant, maybe there's a possibility and this is prison industry kind of activity. Our women's, you know, confinement area there in Mingala, you get a sewing machine, you get the fabrics or whatever, maybe. And what they do is they supply the mattress themselves. We won't have to be paying for some vendor off island. It will be self-sustaining and then the extras could go for, for sale, right? Another part that, and this might be part of, related to what Senator Sabrina Perez comes up, some of them did recycling and they were actually, the inmates, collect all the recycled aluminum cans and everything, and then they would sell it and then they'll go into a fund for the inmates, you know, for the fund and then that's, that's shared and part of it, a percentage of that goes to victims restitution fund or something like that, right? And other pays for other sort of like cost expenses, right?
Are they current, currently helping out? I mean, since some of the schools are closed down, I think, I think, are they helping out, there are no kids around? Are they helping out in, in some of the, the situation with the schools?
The, the inmate work labor crew that's tasked for DPW that we sign an M O U with and, and Parks and Run aren't going into the schools. They're just, for DPW, it's on that area where the illegal dumping was at and on the highway where they're sort of backlog and remember in the middle, the island, you can see the grass? So they're taking care of that. And then for Parks and Run, their plan is to look at, there are several parks, but
But wouldn't it be all right for them to go to the schools if the schools are particularly closed down?
Now, now, that would be a conversation too, that we would have for G D U if they're willing to come up with, you know, individuals who, of course, on our M O U, it says the supervisors have to be, have clear records, right? They can't have any criminal records and stuff and all that and they attend our training. There's nothing stopping the G D U of coming forward and approaching us and asking us if their school is closed, nothing stops them from coming to us and then we can have our inmates do that too. We'll be open to that.
The, the other thing I'm going to ask is, is this, in the overcrowding situation and we knew that there was, of course, the feds had taken us to the court years back and, and we're looking like, again, that we're getting to that point. Is there, is there a possibility, and if there is a possibility of like, I guess, for lack of a better term, a federal takeover again, or, or some kind of lawsuit with, with, with DOC, kind of like with, with the dump situation where they have to come in and, and, you know, we have no choice but to get this done and I think with, with the, with the dump situation, I think for a while, I don't know how many weeks, but it was costing us a million dollars a week that we had to pay.
There were, there's always that possibility, Senator, especially with inmates in there. If they're going through conditions of overcrowding, the temperatures are hot in those domes right now with the air conditioning system, we're using fans, that's not sufficient enough, even down at the Hagana Detention Facility. It just takes a couple of inmates to file their suit, go to their lawyer and we're faced with some litigation, right? So, but with me going into there and talking to the inmates, I went and I did a walkthrough and talked to them and I myself can have empathy and saying, this is a priority to get these cooling systems and air conditionings up. I mean, I worked in correctional facility where the conditions are suitable and they're good, not like what's happening here and seeing
Well, let me ask you this, and, and again, this is not a reflection of your leadership, it's a reflection of your leadership that you're going there and talking to the inmates and, and hopefully blunting the fact that they, that they won't, you know, file anything against DOC. But in what we see there, just the, the assessment, not based again on your leadership, but the conditions there, how close are we to that? To that situation happening? How close are we to, to, again, them just, look, man, it's really hot in here, the conditions and
Right, right now with 200 down there, that, that facility, Hagana Detention is made for 135. There's 200. We had 177 when I came in in August, now it's up to 200. That lawsuit can happen tomorrow. It can happen any day, any of those inmates, they're detainees right now. So they're not really sentenced yet, right? But they can easily do that. The warden's doing his best on the overflow to bring them back up to, to get some of them up on Mingala to secure them. But even in Mingala too, those domes, I think two or three of them have air conditioning situations with the
So basically, in essence, conditions are ripe for something like that to happen?
Yes, yes, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations and again, you, you got my support and I, I hope my, I hope my colleagues don't ask me to recuse my recuse from voting for you.
You keep mentioning it, we might have to.
I might have to. Thank you, Senator Luan. Senator Kanata?
Alfred, Mr. Bernalio, it's quite rare you have a congressman and your predecessors support you on this new post, right? I know you come from the thin line, thin blue line of law enforcement, and it's very good that you want to continue to serve the island. I know you certainly want to continue to serve the island because you continue to run for public office. So it brings me great pleasure to support you in this endeavor, and I know that the administration wants a good person in that seat to make sure you take the helm, literally straight on, and you've been running that course forever. So I don't really have anything more to say, I think the panel's already exhausted most of my questions, and a lot of them we've already answered. One thing though is alongside with the Mauar recovery, do you have any plans towards flooding mitigation? Because I know your access road on the frontage consistently has flooding, even though there's a sewer pump right across your facility. That ponding basin obviously isn't adequate, do you have any goals towards resolving that?
Thank you for that question. I actually met with the Mingila mayor, and, you know, that's the first mayor I met with to touch base with him, because he's like our partner. He actually lend us bush cutters for our minimum amount, inmates to cut along the fence lines outside. And I will look into finding out whether there was any plans, because, you know, any time that happens in that location, we'll either touch base with the Mingila mayor or the mayor of Chanampago too, because we're off of Miami Road, and find out. I myself, using my POV, had the, lucky I have an SUV, went through that area, gets flooded, and then I didn't know the secret of my staff who told me, Director, why are you going through that flood? We always call, pull so-and-so to open up the back gate and we go out. I said, okay, you guys didn't tell me that secret, and I already, the water was coming up to my door, you know, so. But I'll definitely take a look at that and see what are some of the plans around that area, especially because at night too, you know, and this is part of the perimeter thing, we need lighting, we might look at solar, you know, powered lights, they're saying it's pretty dark. And we have been finding, again, those contraband being thrown over, you know, the fence line, the cellphone, you know, or a cellphone or some illegal drugs. Every one of them, just letting you know, Senator, we're letting GPD know, Guam Police Department know, we're getting case numbers for that. And hopefully whoever is doing that is caught. We actually, I actually even assigned our intelligence analyst, collateral duties is going to work with Jim McDonald to be, it will be a Crime Stoppers program for Department of Corrections, and it's similar to what Texas did in their Crime Stoppers program. So you might have inmates looking at each other now, saying, who called Crime Stoppers? Because someone got the $1,000 reward or something.
Okay, well, that's great, you're being very proactive with those measures. Other than that, I wish you the best in your new post. I hope to see a lot more progress up there at DOC. I know it's not the most popular subject to support, it is a very difficult, you know, position to be taking. Of course, we wanted to say that no one really wants to be the director of DOC, right? That's not the top-notch directorship, everyone wants to go to the port or GBB, but props to you and those who have taken that post. It's very rare that we find someone as much experienced as yourself. So I wish you all the best again, and if my office can do anything to support you, please let me know.
Thank you, Senator. Can't do it alone without some professional staff back here, Department of Corrections staff, kudos to them.
Thank you, Senator Kanata. Chief Bernalio, just going over some of the points from our sit-down prior to this hearing, you're up to date on the overtime payment?
Yes, we are up to date on the overtime payment.
Okay, and then you had also said that you were anticipating 32 recruits, and then you're aware that we also funded an additional cycle in the budget?
That's correct.
You had discussed with me a possible privatization of transportation?
Our transport services, that's part of, because of our manpower shortage, not only the transportation, to look at an option cost-benefit analysis, to privatize all transports, but at the same time looking at the perimeter security. But with that transports, that pulls our officers back into the facility.
Okay. Visitation, and that has been reinstated?
Visitation, I believe, is reinstated.
Okay. Incoming also, it's been ongoing, right?
I believe so, yeah.
GCC, education slash work release programs?
As I said to Senator Luan, I'm going to check on that, on where we're at in terms of, because I remember there's some individuals who may be eligible to attend and continue their schooling, seeing where, how that happens and stuff.
I was in receipt of some concerns that I had received via email from some staff at DOC, and I don't really want to get into the specifics, but just basically, generally speaking, did you inherit any investigations from the previous director? And are these, if you did, are you seeing these investigations through?
Yes, the Internal Affairs section, they had, there were some ongoing internal affairs stuff and some grievances, I believe, too, that I attended for a civil service commission, and continuing on there until they're completed.
Okay, so the staff that communicated with me did express that they wanted to see that continuity. And I think just generally speaking, with as many different directors as we've seen over the years, I just have to ask, are you in this for the long haul?
Yes, I'm in this for the long haul.
And then I believe this former director, Lamarena, had, actually, hold on there. I get a lot of calls from family members of inmates and detainees talking about conditions, so I just kind of wanted to go through some of these issues, because we definitely want to do whatever we can to mitigate any potential lawsuit. I know you had said that we could get sued tomorrow, we could get sued today, there's still 15 minutes left for 5:00 PM, right? So some of the concerns that I've gotten are washing machines out of commission, is that correct?
That's right, there's some washing machines that are out of commission, so we're hoping to get that repaired. There are some, again, like I said, the warden has indicated, there are some individuals who might have the skill, you know, to repair the washing machine, right? One thing, again, and I had mentioned to you to this, when I'm part of the Criminal Review Commission with Judge Elizabeth Barrett Anderson, is that when these inmates work in our compound, they should get one day release for 40 hours of work inside the compound. Right now, they're not doing, not getting that incentive, I wanted to add that in.
Other concerns I had received, Chief, meal portions, not enough. Is that something that you can address with the vendor? I mean, have you seen the meals?
Actually, I have not seen the meal, oh, wait a minute, I take that back, I've seen the meals when they were being delivered and stuff and all that, but I didn't go and, you know, see how much of the portions are indicated, you know, for them being supplied in the facilities. But that's something I can look at, I can look at that.
Okay, appreciate it. I haven't seen a picture either, because that would mean someone would have had a cellphone and...
I'll just tell you, Senator, when I was in corrections in the Marine Corps, their bread and water, they still do bread and water with six loaves of bread for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And a doctor comes and checks, but this isn't...
The Santos want this, right? Coin operating machines have been out since Mauar, and inmates, detainees are drinking tap water?
That's the first I've heard that, I can verify that.
Okay. One toilet operable for 25 inmates, detainees. Roach infestations, no educational program available, you've covered that, and you're committed to see that through?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you follow up on these issues? I don't want to turn in an oversight hearing, but, you know, I also don't want to call you back here for an oversight five minutes from your confirmation hearing, so if you could, Chief, just follow up on this.
I can check into these issues, yeah.
Thank you. And then lastly, former Senator and former director Tony Lamarena had talked about, you can't do it alone, and the legislature has to help. But I was just looking through, again, the transcripts from the last hearing, and I'm very encouraged by just your overall level of, you seem like, you know, you want to be here and you want to make these changes. But the former director, and I'm not, you know, making any inferences to his character, but he had basically been very reluctant to admit that the situation at the prison required, you know, help, assistance, he had called it manageable, and we'd ask, I think Senator Luan had asked him on a scale of one to five, how bad was it, and he said three. And so I just think, based on your testimony today, you've been very honest and forthcoming, and I really, as the chair, appreciate that. And so I want to ask, like Senator Lamarena had said, the legislature can help, in what ways do you think we can assist the Department of Corrections?
Thank you for that. You know, as I said, and, you know, when I went and took a tour of the Hagana Detention Facility in Mingila, and I made it known, you know, that I see these things with the rise of the inmates and the increase of them up to 850, as predicted on this master plan, and the facilities are, we don't have a prison that large enough, and it's overcrowding, it can be, and I use the word at the cabinet, meaning a dangerous situation, right? Where people can get hurt, right? That's why when everything reported, sending it up to Office of Homeland Security. I believe from the legislators, legislators, for their help and their assistance to be, of course, I appreciate the open-mindedness, to say, you know, this isn't about politics, but it's about pretty much helping me out, especially when it comes down to some of these, the flexibility of some legislation on our budget, you know, and any supplementary budget that may be needed, right, down the line, you know, and the legislature has that, as the financial purstries that come and approve supplementary budget, right, that helps out, right? Especially when we're working to see how we could purchase, and I'm just going to throw this out, you know, 200 Glocks, 22.40 cows, and the ammo that comes, they haven't gone through firearms qualifications in the last two years, and we're category one corrections officers. Or for that manner, stuff that helps us out as we're working with FEMA to repair some of this stuff out. We've had people come up, and actually, we have a chaplain who donated an aircon to the chapel, and individuals from family members are, I won't be surprised, they're coming over and trying to encourage them, instead of throwing a cellphone and drugs over, I mean, I wouldn't mind you bringing a portable aircon that we can plug up, you know, the portable one you can get at one of the businesses, and we'll bring it into the facility, like that, right? But just the open-mindedness, just asking for US lawmakers that you see some of these things, I'm certainly welcome to get as much help as I can, especially with, you know, the cycle now that we, with this lapse into loan, we can get two more cycles, and looking at flexibility, possibly with the, we'll look at the cost-benefit analysis of the privatization of the transport services and our perimeter security that we definitely need.
You know, with the legislature, we had on loan provided some of the swamp chillers to the dome this year for, I think, a few different months, and then at the time we were told that the contract was out for the ACs, and so it sounds like you're still having aircon issues. So what's the status, you're waiting on the FEMA?
Right now FEMA already went, and when they saw the conditions there, they're saying this is going to be, this has to be top priority, Director, and I said, thank you. And already, kudos to Major Antonugin, he had a quote already from one aircon vendor, you know, it went up to about $45,000 or something like that. But there was another aircon vendor that gave me a $50-some thousand dollar quote, within the same range, but at least the quotes have been there. So at least when it hits October 1st, that's the priority to get those conditions corrected.
Let me know, Chief, because, again, we've got a few of those things out on loan to the schools, but there might be a couple extra ones floating around here, so if you reach a situation where it's not looking like that procurement's going to go through smoothly, you know, let us know. And other than that, you're basically saying, show you the money, right? Okay, so, thank you. Is there any further testimony? All right, thank you, Chief, and we look forward to voting on your nomination on the floor. That concludes our hearing on Fred Bernalio Jr. We now move on to the appointment of Luline C. St. Augustine as the Guidance Counselor Representative Member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. And we'll go ahead and start with Ms. Evangeline Sepeda, welcome back.
Good afternoon, I'm back again. My name is Evangeline Sepeda. I'd like to thank this legislative body for being here, and Senator Barnett, Senator Perez, Senator Tadegui, and Senator Luan for being present. I'm here today to support Luline Conception St. Augustine. For the record, she's family. She comes from a good family, very much involved in the education field. I just, you know, I just think that this position, a lot of people don't, they're not aware of it. It's not a fun position, it's not an exciting position, it's not something that you're in the limelight. But at the end of the day, you're the person in the back that makes these things happen at the Department of Education. You know, it's very critical, because you have to be with regards to reviewing things, making sure things, the documentations are in order in regards to certification, it sometimes sucks at the end of the day. But somebody's got to do it, and I'm glad that Luline is stepping up to this and taking this position. And I'm here in full support of her, I don't want to prolong this. It's not, it's not a fun position, nobody wants this position. Like they mentioned about DOC now, but everyone's not knocking on the door, this is one of the cases of DOE that nobody wants to do. It's tedious, it's time-consuming, it's very quiet. But she makes things happen to ensure that the teachers are in the classrooms, to make sure that the teachers and counselors, guidance counselors are certified and meet all the requirements under the 14 Points of Adequate Education. I also want to mention that I'm glad that she's a Guidance Counselor Representative Member, it's very important. You know, when I was in the Board of Education, everybody emphasizes on the teachers. But we know in this society of ours, we have a mental crisis, anxiety, depression, suicide is extremely high air. Her, what she does day in and day out, I need to say, is critical to our children. And I want to say that when I was going to school, when you say Guidance Counselor, it's okay, social studies, there, that's it. Really, that's what it was. Now, that's the bare minimum, because now they have to ensure that, is this child meeting their needs as far as, not educational, but mental. And they do the home front, you know, they take the extra mile that nobody really seems to care or know about, because we emphasize on the teachers, which is where it should be, it's Department of Education. But as you know, it takes a community to raise one child, and it's even harder today with the craziness, and I've said this before, and I've said this again, parents can't leave it to the schools. Parent should not leave it to the schools, and shame on those parents that do. I could not run for Senator because they wouldn't vote for me, because I'm saying the truth. But I need to say that, that parents need to own up to their children. In the old days, if I misbehaved, my Auntie Telo could come and tickle my ears, spank me, and my mom would not hesitate or interfere. Do it. I give you a second time to do it, if she does it again. So there was a community effort. Here is, they leave it to, guess who? The teachers, counselors, GPD, DOC, and it goes on and on. And so it's very critical that she takes this position, not only is she working already as a counselor, but this is an added duty and responsibility. So I'm here to say that I am in full support of Luline with this position, and if nominated and pass, rest assured, you will not regret this. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you, Mrs. Sepeda. Roberta Abade?
Thank you, Senators, for allowing us to come today.
Thank you, Senators, for allowing us to come today in support of Ms. San Augustine. My name is Robert Abade. I am the chairperson for the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. As such, I'm here as the representative and I'm telling you that we do need to have the representative for counseling. We are from the Department of Education as well as from the community. We are always 100% in attendance at all of our meetings except for the last few months where we have been waiting for the representative to come for counseling. So we are looking forward to having her come on board with us and we thank you very much for your positive nomination for her. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mrs. Luline C. San Augustine, did you have a, a statement to make?
Yes. Hoffa Day, Senator Barnett, Senator, uh, Luhan, Senator Perez, and Senator Tadegui. I am honored to be here today as a nominated member of the Guam Commission of Educator Certification. I would also like to thank Governor Lulion Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio for this appointment. Throughout my career, I have had the privilege of working in various capacities that have prepared me for this role. From my experience in working with now retired Judge Anita Esacola for 10 years in the courtroom, six years as a GDOE clinical intern under the supervision of Nadine Sepeda, and 11 years as a school counselor with the Guam Department of Education, I have gained valuable insights into the challenges of many of our children on Guam, uh, children on Guam encounter. I know that having me on the committee and seeing me through the lens of a school counselor, together we can ensure that our educators not only impart knowledge, but also fosters the social and emotional growth of our students. If confirmed, I pledge to approach my role as a commission member with dedication, integrity, and a strong sense of responsibility. I believe in the power of collaboration and open communication to drive positive change. I am committed to working closely with my fellow commission members and making well-informed decisions, decisions that serve the best interests of our children of Guam. In conclusion, I am truly excited about the opportunity to contribute to the success of the Guam Commission of Educator Certification. I am confident that we, together, we can achieve great things and hold uphold the mission for all students. Sidozmasi.
Thank you, ma'am. You're definitely needed on the, um, the commission. So we look forward to expeditiously moving your appointment. And I'll defer now to my colleagues, starting with Senator Tadegui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, San Augustine, for stepping up to the plate, serving. I mean, with your background, oh my gosh, you know, anybody who would not confirm your appointment is really not well informed, but you have such a great background and that's what makes you even more special to, to give back to the community, especially when you have two ladies on the slide giving, uh, great support. These people are not individuals that are not respected in the community themselves. And for them to come up, you know, and testify on your behalf says a lot. So I wish you the very best and, uh, I, you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Luhan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got no questions. I, you got my full support. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I, I think it's been said by both ladies sitting next to you. So I'm not even going to argue with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's great to see such support. I remember Mrs. Abade, she used to be my, my instructor in, uh, education, um, when I, when I was getting my, my teacher degree. Um, and just, you know, looking at your packet, uh, hearing you speak and your testimony, I think you're, you're a high caliber candidate for this position. And I want to thank you for, for accepting this nomination.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Canata?
First and foremost, I think we're related, but, um, I think your mom is Miss Lou Benaventi, right?
Yes, she is.
Okay. So yeah, we're definitely related. It's very good to see that you're stepping up to the public service table. Um, you know, I see that you have an extensive career in the government and you've also served in multiple capacities. So, um, not only because we're related, am I going to support you. Um, I wish you all the best and if my office can support you in any way, please let me know.
Thank you, Senator.
You got a lot of good supporters with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Yeah, we know your mom, girl.
I didn't put that in my opening speech.
Nice. So, uh, if there's no further testimony? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Uh, we now move on to the appointment of Rosanna D. San Miguel Tiston as the General Public Representative Member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council. Again, thank you for your testimony. Okay, we're now on the appointment of Rosanna D. San Miguel Tiston as the General Public Representative Member of the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council. And we have here providing, uh, testimony. Sina Minetgood, did you want to go first?
Por una por una, sir.
Just go for it. Yes.
Gaigizu pogu para bai impotti hinasoku para bai hunai testimonio putzi Rosanna San Miguel Tiston nima apontanya para u memblun ibri representantin publikun henirot. Gi Guam Academy Charter Schools Council. Desti hutungu gui totti anai umis kuwekela ham gi za George Washington Junior High, mi estama fanaan Algada Johnston Junior High, Puspa Go Middle School. Hatzatagini na senyanya gi hafa hatsozo gui. Masaya rektu sita tonya loti mahnya imalago nya para utzagi mo'na mas za adzu na duru kuma hulu i kompionshanya na hungan gaibali para minaulek. Gi iskuela in George Washington High School na sobaono ham gi todo klasin ine'tnon guaha gi iskuela mege mientras in petsisigi i studian momi. Magahi adzu na tempo na sina unli'i imatula i kanya para utzogi hafa ha necesita para aproveza'dzi i direction zan idiniretsu. Dispues di iskuela na o'tru salan momi en hanau gui gili na'la la hulili'i gui huhuhungu putpi na khatnyasia. Chrez famago'nya chrez na famala'wan ni hapoxa i kinahulo'nia. Za aenina'binadosa nu istaunia pogu. Tipumora manguifi na masaya hafa na finatsaga patpi na desi hatungu na para usetbi itautau nya gi komini dot za mahot oddut salan pogu. Zanya para ugai gi gi halumtenautau za adzu na hatungu kuma lamtini zan mu'mana hazi ini sisidotsia para i manomku imanailihing i hazi numisisita adzu du zan ifamago'nsia. Ti ma mahlo sumu'un mo'na kumo ti nina'doniu o'tru kumo ti ma kontra ilai pat kumu para sinafo. Magahi na hapipiga o'tru antes di gui za metgu'di sinipotin familyonya zan imanatungo' nya zan ginin esti zan sidu'ustata na sina ha espiadi impenyu para ogai kwalidad za usenseru i hinengenyu kuma hazi gui zan put hafa gui. Propiu ima apontanya za hutungu na ti hu'urenunsea pat utzanda i obligashon esti na inangoku. Ze'luhu gui gi kurasuan matlinanila hihu za aii itzakatseleknya on tungu ha nagai gui sa'bulagui na'izat zan minaguf. Guahu si Elwi si Teresa Titleo si Sina Minetgood. Sidu'usma'asi za u gui za tengwagnmizo.
Sidozmasi, Sina Minetgood. Hugh Williams? Okay. Terracita G. Smith?
Sorry. Hoffa Day, Senator Barnett, and committee members. Please allow me to introduce myself. My name is Terracita Guevaras Smith from the District of Ode, Chalampago. I am a Department of Defense retired intelligence officer from the Defense Intelligence Agency. I am here to support the confirmation of Mrs. Rosanna San Miguel Tiston as a member of the General Public Representative for the Guam Academy Charter School Council. She would be an asset and a team player on this prestigious council. Her leadership abilities, coupled with her lifelong experience in education and government work, will provide a diverse array of knowledge and expertise to the council. Rosanna has the stamina, the tactfulness, and the professionalism, making her a great team player. I highly concur on her nomination to the Guam Academy Charter School Council. And I must add to what Ms. Elwi stated about the character of Ms. Rosanna. I knew this woman 39 years ago from high school. All three of us, Elwi, myself, and Rosanna was in GW Junior ROTC. Rosanna's strength then is as much present today. We were in the drill team where we drilled with M-14 weapons, 13 pounds. Rosanna was in my drill team as well as Elwi. Rosanna will be at the end of the line while one of the women will throw an M-14 through four other women and this woman here catch that weapon. I mean, that's the strength. But the strength that I see is a strength, a strong tata'tano spirit that I saw then. And because of what I saw, I stayed in contact with her. 39 years later, I'm sitting here in front of you to testify about her character because she is worth it. Donkuna sisozmasi.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Gutierrez? Are you providing, uh, testimony? Okay, okay. You're just part of the OCP? Uh, okay, Ms. Vanji Sepeda. Oh, okay, sorry. Yes.
Thank you, Evangeline M. Sepeda. Thank you to all the senators here. I know she's the last one. I want to state that as the ladies up here said, women power. Um, I asked, and when the governor called me and my frustration, I am only one person and I'm a team player. I've never said I. It's always we. And when the governor called me and she asked me, "Vanji, what is it that you need for the charter school?" I said, "We have a lack of quorum. It's not enough to..." I just, I want rules. And she said, "Who do you highly recommend?" I said, "I highly recommend," and I shared this with my dear friend, "Rosanna San Miguel." And I said it because I prayed on it and thought about it. And I, I, I followed up with it, you know, and I followed up with it. And thank you to the governor, Lulion Guerrero, for following up with it and making this happen today with her nomination. Now, I'm going to say that as a charter school, I'm not in it. I'm going to, I'm going to leave this position, right? Whether I like it or not. But I like to leave it in great hands with a great team. And we've made major strives and major positive with the charter school because I'm feisty. I come here and I, Senator, you know this. Can we meet, Senator? I need this for the charter school because it's, it's not for me. It's for the students. And I need a great team. And with a great team, we can make it happen. And so I know for a fact, it's just not enough to serve. We know this. Anybody can serve. Anybody can be nominated. Come, guess what? Time to show up for tough decisions, hard work. People think that this is my full-time job. No, it's not. I have a real full-time job. But when I serve, it's about doing it, not saying it. And so with this, Rosanna would be in that league. And I, I'm just here to tell you that with everything going on, charter schools have come a long way. I have to say this, that Rose, Amanda Blas from the beginning of the charter schools, she's a great, intelligent, young woman. Why things didn't happen, it's not because of her. It's because there was a lack of people that were as committed as she was to the charter schools. That's why things didn't happen back then. I, I always tell her when I see her, people don't give you enough credit. She showed up, she stepped out, and she performed. But you can't do it to one person. It's just like the legislative body. You, it's time to vote and the senators are not there. It's when they're needed. They have to be present here. And so I say with the charter schools, Rosanna will be an instrumental asset. She will be present. She knows I will bug the hell out of her, but that's understandable. And, you know, she was an elected board of the Department of Education as well. So in every committee that I was in, I asked her, "Okay, you've got to be my co-chair." And we worked that team because that's just the way it works. And she's very dynamic. And I, to her classmates here, I've not known her longer than that, but I've known her for over 30 years. And I can say that she will be instrumental to moving charter schools forward and the major progress. And, uh, you know, we, we had lunch the other day and she says, "Tell me." We were going back and forth. She took her public law. I said, "You're on right track" because I was going to give her lesson 101 on charter schools. Be present, be active, make tough decisions. And I like you, if you could do this as soon as possible, the urgency, um, you know, with all the other ones that came before Ms. Rosanna to testify in their nomination, it's really critical at this time right now. It really is. And I really want to say thank you to the senators here and giving, you know, giving us the opportunity for Rosanna to be here. Um, you won't regret it. She will be an active member. If nominated and passed, she'll be an active member to the Guam Academy Charter School Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vanji. Uh, Rosanna San Miguel Tiston, did you have a opening statement?
Yes, sir. Uh, but should I forego all of that and go straight to questions and answers since I had such accolades? Thank you very much for the support. But Senator, Buenas de Hoffa Day, Chairman Barnett, and the distinguished committee members, all of you, I know all of you are very hardworking senators. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, to introduce myself and to present my bona fides for the position of General Public Representative to the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council, position to which I was nominated by Governor Lulion Guerrero. And I thank the governor and the lieutenant governor, and of course, Ms. Vanji Sepeda. My name is Rosanna San Miguel Tiston. I'm a resident of Chalampago and the daughter of Juan Atuegui and Esperanza San Miguel. I am the eldest of eight children. And so since they're eight, I won't say each name right now, but I'm sure they're watching. Those eight children, very early in my life, my parents, uh, my parents taught me the importance of compassion and civic responsibility. My experience in public service and civic duty began when I was a junior in high school. I was tapped to be in the Junior Honor Society and it carried on to my high school years. In my sophomore year, I joined the Junior Reserves Officer Training Corps, JRTC. This was my formal entry into, uh, training into leadership and it was a great training. I finished my senior year in a command position and the training